For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.
All right, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the first regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County in September. Today is September 3, 2025. It is 10:01 a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Bridget Thorn.
Present.
Vice Chairman Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Dana Barrett.
Present.
Commissioner Mo Ivory. Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Raqman. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
All right, please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come this morning just to say thank you. We thank you, Lord, for all who have gathered. We pray your blessings be upon them. We pray now, Lord, to bless this meeting as you continue to bless our commissioners. Lord, we thank you, and we give you all honor, glory, and praise. It's in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. Twenty-five, zero-two, zero-six, two-two, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the County Commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any Consent Agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the First Regular Meeting Agenda for separate consideration.
All right, any items on the Consent Agenda, Commissioners? Any items? If not, an entertaining motion to adopt the Consent Agenda as its parent. Motion to adopt by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. On page five, First Regular Meeting Agenda. Twenty-five, zero-six, three-three, Adoption of the First Regular Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, we have, there are revisions to today's recess meeting agenda on page eight. Two items sponsored by Commissioner Ivory have been amended, revised to include amended resolutions. Twenty-five, zero-six, four-six, Request approval of resolution to increase the budget for the Department of Senior Services in the amount of $2,994,000. And also on page eight, twenty-five, zero-six, four-eight, Request approval of resolution to amend to increase the departmental budget of the Department of Arts and Culture in the amount of $1,700,000.
All right, Madam Clerk, question for you and for the Board. These items were discussed at the last meeting. And I think there's some confusion about the motion to file. It's been the practice of this Board for at least 20-something years that a motion to file, I guess the best way to put it so we have all have the same understanding, is a kinder, gentler way of denying whatever is before us. And in that case, once a motion is made to file, it does not come back. Now, I don't know how this is on the agenda or why it's on the agenda, but typically when, even when something is denied, there would be a substantial change in the legislation before it's placed on the agenda again. In this case, it seems like the only thing has changed are the numbers that are here. So it's my position that this is not properly before us today. That's why we need to have the same understanding of what a motion to file means. However, what I will do without any objection today, since Commissioner Ivory, you filed, you brought these back, you may not have known about the practice and the history of the motion to file, but going forward, I want all of us to be on the same page. A motion to file is a proper motion based upon the practice of this body.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I am aware. However, the County Attorney's Office advised that these items could come back.
Well, the County Attorney advises me. My ruling, the County Attorney's been here three years. I'm telling you what the practice is, Madam County Attorney. But what I'll do is let it go today, Commissioner Ivory, but let's have an understanding of the Board of what they, what the practice has been. You want to be heard.
Oh, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I, with all due respect, thank you for giving me that historical perspective of a motion to file, but there is no procedure of a motion to file in our rules or in Robert's Rules of Order. Sometimes something has been done as a practice that is not codified, that is not in our rules. And under Rule Six of our rules, I have the right to place these items on the agenda because there is no such procedure, either in our procedure rules, which are our Fulton County procedures, or in Robert's Rules of Order that prevent me from bringing back an item that others would want not to be seen on the agenda again. And while I respect, I even have seen this while I've been here, I do think that this is a unique situation because this is really just about who wants to get the credit for putting something on the agenda instead of...
Let's stick to the rule.
Okay, instead of dealing with what we want to do for our citizens. So I thank you for allowing it to stay on the agenda for today, and I hope that we will move forward in what's right for our constituents, not for our egos.
All right, Madam County Attorney, what is your understanding of the, of the practice of a body?
The practice of filing, a motion to file, is that what you said?
A practice of, on any rule or regulation.
So according to Robert's Rules, a small body, and that's defined as a body of less than a dozen or so members, is allowed to have its own rules that are known to its own members, and motions may be made that are not specifically codified, but they can be made if all of the members understand and agree as to what the effect of the motion is.
Okay. All right, again, that's the rule, that's the practice, but I'll let this go because Commissioner Ivory did not have the benefit when she placed these on. Commissioner Thorn, you want to be heard?
Please. Yeah, I just want to get, we looked into this and researched this, and the practice started in 1982, so it's been a while, it's been around a bit. As a new commissioner, I was explained, the motion to file, maybe they forgot to give you that in yours, but maybe if it's a technicality, maybe we should draw up official language, rule language, to put it in our rules and procedures.
I can do that. It's crystal clear, but anyway, continue. Anything else?
No, no, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Motion to adopt the agenda for today as amended. Motion to do so by Commissioner Thorn, seconded by Commissioner Ivory. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. Twenty-five, zero-six, three-four, Ratification of Minutes. First Regular Meeting Minutes, August 6th. Second Regular Meeting Post-Agenda Minutes, August 20th, 2025.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorn, please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes. Six yeas, zero nays. Twenty-five, zero-six, three-five, Presentations of Proclamations and Certificates. The first proclamation is recognizing Corporal Zahir Muad Appreciation Day, sponsored by Chairman Pitts, Vice Chairman Ellis, Commissioners Thorn, Barrett, Ivory, and Abdul-Raqman.
All right, good morning. All right. This is a good-looking group right here.
Best in the town.
Best in the town, for sure. Not to be messed with. All right, well, it's my distinct honor and then on behalf of the entire Board to provide this resolution today, proclamation today. Whereas on Friday, April 18, 2025, Fulton County Police Officer Corporal Zahir Muad was on patrol in the area of Fulton Industrial Boulevard and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive when he observed a suspicious person walking in and out of traffic in the direction of 4120 Fulton Industrial Boulevard. And whereas Corporal Muad made contact with the subject, and subject became confrontational as this was happening, South Fulton Police Department Lieutenant Charles Cook, who was traveling on Fulton Industrial Boulevard, observed Officer Muad in the roadway at his patrol vehicle and stopped to assist. Whereas, as Lieutenant Cook exited his vehicle, the subject opened fire, striking both Corporal Muad and Lieutenant Cook, and ran from the scene. Even though he was shot, Corporal Muad gave chase and pursued the subject from the middle of the road to the parking lot of 4120 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, when a gunfight ensued between Corporal Muad and the subject. And whereas the subject took his life, and Officer Muad immediately ran back to Lieutenant Cook and began providing first aid, his gunshot wound severed the axillary artery high on the arm and was bleeding badly when Corporal Muad applied a tourniquet to the wound and other wounds. Both officers were transported to the Marcus Trauma Center at Grady Memorial Hospital for treatment. And whereas Lieutenant Cook went directly into emergency surgery, and it was determined by medical professionals that Officer Muad's tourniquet placement was not only perfect, but was life-saving. Corporal Muad's bravery and quick thinking not only saved Lieutenant Cook's life, but the lives of every innocent person in the immediate area. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and all personnel associated with the Fulton County Police Department recognizes Officer Zahir Muad for his bravery and quick thinking under pressure and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, September 3, 2025, as Corporal Zahir Muad Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Let's give him a huge hand. We want to, I give you both an opportunity to say something. Yeah, keep, everybody up, everybody up. Look at that, look at that. We can't say, we can't say enough words of praise for what you did that day. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'm Wade Yates, I'm the Chief of Police in Fulton County, and while I think tourniquets are absolutely a must for every police officer to carry, not only to save a fellow officer, but a citizen, and the training is very important, the one thing that we cannot train is the bravery aspect, and without that, none of this would have happened. I also want to thank Lieutenant Cook from South Fulton for stopping to assist that day. Lord knows what could have happened had he not stopped, and he was unable to be present today, but he has made a full recovery. Thank you very much for coming.
I'm Corporal Muad with Fulton County Police. April 18th was just a normal day for me on patrol. I stopped a subject who was a hazard to himself and others. Things went from zero to 100 quickly. I want to thank Lieutenant Cook for being there by my side. I also want to thank God because he was there for both of us. I want to thank my family, Fulton County Police, the Fulton County government system, and thanks for providing me the training and the tourniquets used to save Lieutenant Cook's life.
The next proclamation is recognizing Recovery Month, sponsored by Vice Chairman Ellis, Commissioners Ivory, Chairman Pitts, Commissioners Thorn, Barrett, and Abdul-Raqman.
Yeah, some representatives from our Behavioral Health area that are joining us this morning. Good morning, Matrina. Is it just your... We just got department resources, we're together, and community partners here, too. Okay, okay. Okay, all right, come here. All right. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness and recovery from mental illness, alcohol and other substance abuse, substance use occurs every day through a variety of recovery support resources and treatment programs. And whereas millions of people across the United States are in long-term recovery, living happy, healthy, and productive lives, in 2025's Recovery Month theme, recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community. The permanent tagline for Recovery Month moving forward, work continues to educate others about substance use disorders and co-occurring disorders, the effectiveness of treatment and recovery services, and that recovery is indeed possible. And whereas education about recovery and addiction is essential to combating the stigma and discrimination faced by people in recovery, and is needed by all Georgians, including public health and safety officials, the workforce, older adults, and families. And whereas Recovery Month celebrates the gains made by those in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions, this observance reinforces the positive messages that behavioral health is essential to overall health. Prevention does work, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners calls upon its citizens to observe National Recovery Month and support the 2025 theme of recovery is for everyone, every person, every family, every community, and does hereby proclaim September 2025 as Recovery Month in Fulton County, Georgia. Cheer up. All right.
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the Fulton County Department of Behavioral Health and the Fulton County Behavioral Health Network, I would like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to the Board of Commissioners for this proclamation in honor of Recovery Month. This recognition is not merely a celebration. It serves as a powerful reminder of resilience of individuals and families who embark on the journey of recovery. Recovery Month is vital as it highlights the importance of mental health and promotes the understanding that recovery is possible for everyone, sorry. It acts as a beacon of hope, encouraging individuals to seek help, and reminding us all that mental health is just as critical as physical health. Through education, awareness... Through education, awareness, and community support, we can break the stigma surrounding mental health issues and empower individuals to reclaim their lives. I also want to emphasize that September is not only Recovery Month, but also Suicide Awareness Month. It is particularly significant for us in Fulton County, where we have faced the highest number of suicide among all counties in Georgia. This stark reality underscores our collective responsibility to foster environments where individuals feel safe to share their struggles and seek the help they need. As we observe both Recovery Month and Suicide Awareness Month, let us unite and to spread hope, foster understanding, and advocate for mental health. Together, we can ensure that no one feels alone in their struggles and that every individual knows that they have a community to support them. We also have a series of events throughout this month, so please check the website for more to come. Thank you.
The last proclamation is recognizing Georgia Stand Up Appreciation Day, sponsored by Chairman Pitts, Commissioners Barrett, Ivory, and Abdul Rahman.
All right. Whereas Georgia Stand Up was founded in two thousand and four by Lorenzo Scott, Charlie Fleming, and Kathy Howell, and under the leadership of Executive Director Deborah Scott, has served as a think and act tank for working families, advancing civic engagement, voter education and registration, workforce development, and equitable public policy, while forging an alliance of community, labor, academic, and government partners to address housing, transit, environmental justice, and economic opportunity in Fulton County. And whereas Georgia Stand Up has registered tens of thousands of voters, challenged voter suppression through innovative tools like the Orange Book and parties at the polls, and founded the Policy Institute for Civic Leadership, training more than five hundred grassroots leaders to champion progressive change. And whereas Georgia Stand Up established its workforce development affiliate, Trade Up Build Up, which received national recognition from the U.S. Department of Labor and now leads programs in construction, trades, energy transition, and climate resilience. And whereas through collaborations with Fulton County Government, local stakeholders, and community organizations, Georgia Stand Up has secured community benefits agreements that prioritize neighborhood right, that prioritize neighborhood, character, affordability, and anti-displacement efforts. And whereas Georgia Stand Up has enhanced the quality of life in Fulton County through initiatives such as the revitalization of Ever James Orange Park, preservation of Fire Station Number Seven, and the creation of civil rights murals honoring unsung heroes in the historic West End. And whereas Georgia Stand Up has been instrumental in advancing transit equity, mobilizing voters for the twenty sixteen T-SLOSS referendum, supporting MARTA expansion, and championing transit-oriented development that integrates affordable housing, public transit, and job access in underserved communities, while advocating for community benefits, including local hiring, workforce training, and livable wages. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the significant contributions of Georgia Stand Up to advancing civic engagement and social equity across the state of Georgia, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, September third, twenty twenty-five, as Georgia Stand Up Appreciation Day in Fulton County.
Well, good morning. So when our rights are under attack, what will we do? Yes, we will. So I am honored to be here. My name is Deborah Scott. I am so happy to celebrate our wonderful staff and team. But more than that, it's really about the community. We stand up for our community, whether it's Mrs. Johnson or Mrs. Jackson, that really needs to make sure that she can stay in her community or get the resources that she needs. So we want to invite everyone this year to do a couple of things. One, make sure you have your voter registration card updated, right? And make sure you actually know where you vote. Two, get a library card, Mo, right? We want a library card. We want to make sure that you have healthcare. But we also want to make sure that you're in community together because we are facing some perilous times. And the only way all of us collectively will survive is if we work together. So when our rights are under attack, what will you do? I said, what will you do? Yes, that's what we'll do. Thank you.
Continue, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page five, public hearings. Twenty-five, zero, six, three, six, public comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom conferencing by registering on the county website, Priority for public comment will be given to Fulton County citizens and those individuals representing businesses or organizations located within Fulton County. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed sixty minutes. In the event the sixty-minute time limit is reached prior to public comments being completed, public comment will be suspended and the business portion of the BOC meeting will commence. Public comment will resume at the end of the meeting. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we will start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received twenty-six speaker cards. Will the first five speakers please come forward? Chief Magistrate Judge Cassandra Kirk, Josh McLauren, Trey Riddle, Maurice Kenner, and Chris Hayden.
All right, we have one hour for public comment. It is ten twenty-nine, so say ten thirty. It will go until eleven thirty. Assuming we have twenty-six speakers, we should be able to accommodate everybody. And as I always say, if someone has said what you were going to say, don't feel compelled to repeat it. We hear you. And also, when you have fifteen seconds of your two minutes left, I'll say fifteen seconds, and that will be your clue to begin to terminate or conclude your remarks. First speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Cassandra Kirk, and I serve as Chief Magistrate Judge of the Fulton County Magistrate Court. I'm speaking in support of Agenda Item twenty-five dash zero six four four. Congratulations on identifying sixty-nine million dollars in additional county resources. This creates an opportunity to address a crisis affecting your constituents who work in our courts. Two independent assessments documented our staffing crisis. In twenty sixteen, Carl Vincent Institute recommended seventy-eight to eighty-nine support staff. In twenty twenty-four, State Justice Institute recommended fifty-three point five additional positions. Our current reality is that we have three exhausted staff supporting twenty-six judges in nine courtrooms across four locations. Your constituents, our team members, are overworked and tired. Despite operating with substantially less than the recommended staff, they've delivered a ninety-two point nine percent case closure rate, closing over seven hundred thousand cases in ten years. We've innovated with AI technology, and we've maintained twenty-four seven operations. But they can't sustain this pace. Daily case processing has dropped from four hundred to less than two fifty. Families wait longer, businesses face delayed disputes. We respectfully request funding for six essential positions costing six hundred eleven thousand nine hundred thirty-nine dollars. This isn't about you and me. This is about court operations, and it's about supporting the people you represent who work here and honoring the seventy thousand cases that parties file annually. Your constituents have proven what they can do, and now they need resources to sustain it.
Fifteen seconds.
As always, we welcome the opportunity to discuss these requests with you and your designees as we have with budget and strategy. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's great to be with you all this morning. I am joined by several of my colleagues from the Fulton County Legislative Delegation. Now, I can speak for myself. In my seven years as a state legislator, I've never come down here to pretend I can do y'all's jobs because I know how difficult it is to govern, to govern such a big and complex county. But we have the utmost concern about the process that is playing out right now regarding nominations and appointments, which are two different things, to the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections. We have grave concerns that this is not politics as usual. I think we're all used to, as politicians, a little horse trading here and there to get the job done. These people want this, these people want this. The problem is that the basic contract of our governance is being violated. The people who are being nominated for these roles by the local GOP have the intention to undermine our elections. Now, they've dressed it up in other terms, and I think everyone here is aware of this conflict, and I don't need to get into details. But to talk about the politics of it, this is not a situation where making the Speaker Pro Tem of the House happy is going to solve the problem. This is not a situation where abandoning the appellate litigation that this commission has already validly undertaken and should pursue will solve the problem. Giving a vote to the GOP in this situation is to feed a bottomless hole of demands that ultimately result in undermining the very system of elections that keeps our democracy strong. We have already dealt with national intrigue scandal, made-up scandal about Fulton County elections, and our election workers pay the price. It's not the politicians who pay the price, it's our election workers. So you've received a letter yesterday and this morning
Fifteen seconds.
in the strongest possible terms, and we hope our presence here today underscores this. We urge you to reject the nominations by the GOP to the Fulton Board of Elections. Thank you very much for your time.
Commissioner Thorne, Commissioner Abdul Rahman, Commissioner Barrett, Chairman Pitts, Commissioner Ivory, Commissioner Ellison, Commissioner Arrington. My name is Trey Riddle. I am the District Chief of Staff to Congresswoman Nikima Williams, who represents Georgia's fighting fifth congressional district, and I am here to read a statement on the nomination to the board by the GOP. The Congresswoman states, "I write to express my strong opposition to the nominations of Julie Adams and Jason Frazier to the Fulton County Board of Registrations and Elections. These nominees, handpicked by the Fulton County Republican Party, have embraced conspiracy theories about our elections, and that makes them unfit to serve on a board charged with upholding free and fair elections in Fulton County. Let's be clear. When the Fulton County Board of Commissioners rejected these nominees, they were doing the job that they were elected to do. The Republican Party's response, trying to weaponize the courts to jail Fulton County Commissioners, is a dangerous attempt to intimidate those elected to independently safeguard our elections and to inject partisanship into election administration. Fulton County Commissioners were not elected to rubber-stamp far-right conspiracy theorists. As a member of Congress, I am deeply concerned that Fulton County is being used as a testing ground for a coordinated nationwide campaign to strip the powers from voters and undermine trust in our electoral process.
Fifteen seconds.
Local elected officials must be freed to carry out their responsibilities without fear of retaliation from unelected partisan operatives. The administration of our elections must remain free, fair, and independent. The well-documented election-denying actions of Julie Adams, Jason Frazier will undermine this goal, and for this reason, I have the personal authority to make the decision.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Pitts. I'm Maurice Kenner, Circuit Public Defender for the best public defender office in the state of Georgia. Thank you all for recognizing the needs of my office and for allowing this agenda item to be placed back on the agenda. I need each and every one of your support. We have the premier public defender office in this state. I would like to keep it this way. I wish I could do it for free. That's not how things work. The bottom line is, I need resources. I would ask that Commissioner Thorne, Commissioner Abdul Rahman, Commissioner Barrett, Chairman Pitts, Commissioner Ivory, Commissioner Ellison, and Commissioner Arrington for each of your support today for the agenda item. And I would like to give a special thanks to Commissioner Abdul Rahman for her role that she plays on the Justice Policy Board. She knows how important the work is that we do. I can't do it by myself. I need your support, and please support the agenda item today. Thank you.
I am a Fulton County resident. I have a question for Chairman Rob Pitts and the other Commissioners. If the Fulton County Board of Commissioners are above the jurisdiction of the Georgia Superior Court, what higher court will the Board of Commissioners abide by? Also, when did some members of the Fulton County Board of Commissioners deem it that they were above the law? Specifically, Commissioner Abdul Rahman, Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner Ivory. Twice in the past month, a judge has ruled that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners shall appoint Julie Adams and Jason Frazier to the Board of Registrations and Elections. In the court, the word "shall" was defined as "must." A year ago, Ms. Julie Adams did not want to approve the election because of, without supporting data. By law, she was required to. It did not say she may approve the election results, it said "shall." Even with incomplete data, she abided by the law and approved the results. She could not stand and defend for the Fulton County voters and fight for a fair and accurate election. Has the definition of the word "shall" changed since then? Using the Fulton County Board of Commissioners' definition, going forward, when Julie reads that she shall approve the results, she can ignore that. She can do what is right and not accept erroneous election results. During the last court session, the judge assessed a fine of ten thousand dollars per day. The sad point is, this fine will cost residents of Fulton County. This entire court proceedings are costing Fulton County residents. What our court costs involving attorneys in a superior court. Is it six figures, hundreds of thousands of dollars, or even a million dollars? I do not know. Next time there is a budget hearing and fiduciary responsibility, Commissioners are arguing about not having enough money for the arts, for the prison, keep in mind they're
Fifteen seconds.
going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on Fulton County people to fight Superior Court over the definition of "shall." Which budget item will that come from?
Next five speakers, please come forward. Bobby Paul, Cecilia Baldwin, Kayla Garthas, Kimberly Brooks, and Andreas Castro.
Hi. My name is Bobby Paul, Fulton County resident for 44 years, retired nonprofit director, active voter, and community activist. Thank you for bearing the burden of overseeing all budgets and affairs for Fulton County and ensuring that departments under your supervision are staffed by well-qualified and open-minded individuals, including those serving on the Board of Registrations and Elections. You are the ones we elected. You are in charge. I do not believe that Jason Frazier and Julie Adams, self-proclaimed champions of conspiracy theories on elections, should be permitted to serve on this critical board charged with ensuring open and fair elections. Flashback: November 2020, I served as a vote review panelist for the Fulton Democratic Party, sitting next to a Republican vote review panelist from the party, to make sure that the will of each voter was accurately reflected on each ballot. Thousands of ballots these bipartisan teams reviewed, and when there was something in question, we had a third party to intervene. There was a lot at stake. It was the presidential election. But we had respect for each other and honored the process. But Donald Trump came up short. Brad Raffensperger would not just find 11,780 votes to please Donald Trump, and then election conspiracy theories began and have only grown worse and worse since then. So, here we are today. Voters are counting on each of you to preserve election integrity, not allow it to be torn apart by election-
Fifteen seconds.
...deniers, whose aim is to create chaos and uncertainty in our sacred voting system. Thank you.
My name is Cecilia Ugarte Baldwin. I am the Voter Protection Director for the Democratic Party of Georgia, and I also am a Fulton County resident. Though I have been before you about this matter twice, going back to May, my gratitude for you about this matter, my gratitude remains, and we thank you for your service and for your initial action in voting against the nominations of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams to the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections. I'll keep it brief, since you've had the opportunity to hear from me and the Democratic Party already, but we maintain that Jason Frazier is unfit to serve as a member of the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections for the same reasons we have provided in the past, including that he refuses to follow federal law, governing list maintenance, including voter challenges. And we also maintain that Julie Adams is similarly unfit to serve as a member of the Fulton BRE. She has already exposed the county to litigation with the objective of disenfranchising Fulton voters by refusing to certify elections, all to potentially cast doubt on the legitimacy of our elections. The Democratic Party of Georgia supports the Fulton County Board of Commissioners' appeal as the county is of vital interest in ensuring that voters are not wrongly and illegally disenfranchised. Fulton County voters demand election officials who care about voting rights and the rule of law. In other words, individuals who will not keep running a playbook that simply erodes confidence in our elections. Thank you, and we urge you to stay the course here.
My name is Kayla Garthas, and I serve as the Mid-Fulton Regional Chair of the Fulton County Democratic Party. I want to thank the Commissioners who have consistently stood up for fair elections and voter protection. It's not always easy work, and it doesn't always get attention, but it matters especially now. I urge you to continue opposing the appointments of Julie Adams and Jason Frazier to the Fulton County Registration and Elections Board. These appointments are not neutral. They are part of MAGA's well-documented nationwide strategy to reshape election oversight. Not only does the Republican Party want to repeal access to mail-in voting, they are willing to use legal intimidation to sideline elected officials and remove their authority ahead of the 2026 midterms. Both nominees are affiliated with the so-called Election Integrity Network, a group led by the attorney who advised Donald Trump to pressure our Secretary of State to find 11,000 votes he didn't receive in 2020. That is not a footnote. It speaks directly to intent. Julie Adams refused to certify election results last year while in a position of power. That's not a policy disagreement. It's a breach of public trust. The role of election board member is not to choose which results they accept, but to uphold the law and protect the democratic process. Impartiality isn't optional. It's the job. So I ask, if these individuals have already demonstrated a willingness to put ideology ahead of process, how can we trust them to protect the integrity of our elections moving forward? Commissioners, please continue to do what you've already demonstrated. Defend the institutions that keep our democracy functioning. Uphold the standards that every voter, regardless of party, has the right to expect. Thank you for continuing this fight.
Fifteen seconds.
Please stand the course.
I don't want to be redundant, but of course, I strictly oppose those GOP appointees, but I'm here today on a separate cause. I've gone before counsel yesterday, and the city council, and before him here today. I came before this counsel, Ms. Ivory, Commissioner Ivory, you weren't here. It was Commissioner Hall. So I'm going to repeat this, not to be consistent, and basically, I just think, I think God is angry, right? And I came before this board on May 1st, sent all of you an email regarding me stating that I will have my court date. Well, one of your marshals decided that they will not allow me to have my court date. I sent you an email on the obstruction of a court case in specific detail, went before a counsel on last week, no, yesterday, and I told them, I'm going to enter a claim for counsel for $106,000, and if that law, if that is denied, then I will sue. The same thing for the Board of Commissioners, because this court, Fulton County, as it relates to tenant landlord, I don't know what they're doing down there, but I've informed everyone on this board. And your marshals decided to illegally, illegally evict me. I'm not a person that, to be evicted, I wasn't eligible. I came before this commissioner board, I said I would have a court date. As a child of the Most High God, I have respect for this court. Mr. Pitts, I really respect you. I just don't think this counsel, this board appreciates you, but the level of integrity of this commissioners' board is at stake with this case. It will be public, and this is that, this is, I've tried everything, I've exhausted every means, but I give, after I filed this claim, 30 days.
Fifteen seconds.
Thirty days to approve the claim before I file the lawsuit. Of course, I will sue the property management group, but I want to make this commissioners' board aware of it, and this is me doing my due diligence. God bless.
Commissioners, my name is Andres Castro. I'm a lifelong resident of Atlanta Metro and a proud resident of Fulton County. I'm here to object to the approval of the appointment of the election deniers. I want to remind us what's at stake. On January 6th, our democracy was attacked, attacked by thousands of election deniers. The assault only failed because of the bravery of the men and women who defended our Capitol that day. Election denial isn't just rhetoric. It costs lives. And yet Donald Trump pardoned these rioters, even those who attacked the police. That's not law. That's betrayal. And installing people like this on our election board doesn't protect democracy, it undermines it. So I ask you, are you really going to hand power to those who deny elections, excuse violence, and would dismantle our democracy from the inside? Fulton County should stand for free and fair elections for the people, not for election deniers. Thank you.
Next five speakers, please come forward. Megan Castro, Gail Lee, Christopher Escobar, Lori Connor, and Dee Peyton White.
My name is Megan Castro. I'm a Fulton County resident, and I'm speaking today to urge you to reject the request for approval of the election deniers, Julie Adams and Jason Frazier. Not to be redundant, but our democracy is under attack. I really do believe that today, and I hope that that is something that y'all can also see with the appointments, or the attempted appointments of these election deniers and bad-faith actors who have proven that they will weaponize our judicial system and use the threat of exorbitant fines to intimidate and suppress our elected officials who do not vote how they want them to vote. We must stand on integrity and not bend the knee to these bad-faith actors who actively seek to undermine our democracy through the very seats that they seek to be appointed to. Thank you so much.
Gail Lee, I'm a resident of DeKalb County. How does one verify that an election is accurate and thus certifiable? You compare the number of people in each precinct who voted to the number of ballots that were cast by the precinct. If there are more ballots cast by a precinct than voters for that precinct, you find out if there's a reasonable explanation. That's what the law says, and that is what Julie Adams has tried to do, but they haven't let her see the numbers. So why does verification draw such resistance? What are you afraid she will find? Who are you protecting? It's certainly not the voters. And then there's Jason Frazier, who has done some amazing work analyzing the voter rolls. Only eligible citizens should be voting. He has pointed out registrations that look questionable and should be investigated further. That is a citizen's right and responsibility given him by the legislature. Are you afraid that if he sits on the election board, he will have some influence to see that investigations and corrections actually happen? Is it a bad thing for one person to only have one vote? For people to vote for candidates where they actually live? Or to have an accurate date of birth in order to identify duplicates, the deceased and those who moved out of state? Are these the terrible things for which you are unwilling to seat Mr. Frazier to the Board of Elections? Have you ever considered that maybe-
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
Fulton voter rolls are rife with data, bad is bad. And for the legislatures who are supporting this resistance, shame on you for encouraging this board to ignore the law passed by your body at the request of Fulton legislatures.
Thank you.
Christopher Escobar, I had some planned remarks, but out of respect for Commissioner Pitts, I'm not going to repeat the stuff I've said at other meetings, and I'm just going to speak from the heart. We're here a fourth time to consider restoring arts funding, and I want to thank Commissioner Thorne for you and Commissioner Barrett coming to the Fulton County Arts Event last week. I appreciate not only your remarks and support, but your dialogue and expressing your concerns and making this sustainable. Commissioner Ivory, I want to thank you for reintroducing this, and Commissioner Arrington, thank you for being here to be able to vote on this. And Commissioner Kadesha, I just want to make an appeal to you, because eight months ago, you asked about grace and patience, and I feel like our sector has tried that. Amongst an incredible amount of conflict, an incredible amount of erosion in support, the federal government has abandoned us. The state government was already at 50th, and the little bit of money they gave out was mostly federal, so most of us have nothing. I'm not going to talk about the economic impact or the jobs created, but I want you to consider that unlike government that can issue bonds or change rates, even a private business, I'm a private business owner separately, I can take on investment, I can take on debt, but a nonprofit cannot do that. It doesn't have typically the assets to be able to leverage and take on debt. It doesn't have a guarantor who's willing to sign that on, so they don't have the ability to weather the storm. So Commissioner Pitts, you might think, we'll get to this next year. Think about the number of organizations that won't be here next year. The rugs are getting pulled out from under us. So while I expect a no vote-
Fifteen seconds.
-I'm pleading you to consider the consequences you may not be considering. There won't be a next year. There will be more time for more patience and grace. Thank you.
My name's Lori Connor. I'm the Vice Chair of the North Fulton Democrats and a candidate for Sandy Springs City Council, District One, this November. I'm here to ask you plainly and urgently to vote no on item 25-0649, the appointments of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams to the North Fulton Board of Registration and Elections. These are not neutral nominees. They are election deniers, and that matters, because when the referees stop believing in the rules, the entire game collapses. While on the board, Julie Adams refused to certify the 2024 primary, not because of fraud and not because of facts, but because of discrepancies she never was able to prove. She even filed a lawsuit claiming certification was discretionary. Thank God, the courts threw it out unanimously. And then she tried again, a second time, saying that she lacked information. She didn't lack information. She lacked integrity, and she lacked the trust in our democracy. Jason Frazier tried to purge nearly 2,000 voters from the rolls before the 2024 presidential election, and when this very body rejected his nomination, he went on the social media platform X and declared, "We shall not give up." That's not resilience. That's a warning. He's telling us that when democracy says no, you just keep pounding on the door till it gives in. Adams and Frazier have engaged in a coordinated strategy to inject doubt, drag elections into court, refuse certification, and bleed confidence in our election processes dry. In Fulton County, the most populous county in Georgia, we cannot hand the keys of election oversight to people whose records have proven-
Fifteen seconds.
-that they won't use the office to build trust, but to torch it. Commissioners, this isn't complicated. Voters deserve administrators who will certify truth, not conspiracy. Honor ballots, not undermine them. Who'll take no for an answer when the people have spoken. I respectfully urge that you reject these nominations.
All right. Thank you.
Protect the vote and-
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you this morning. My name is Patton White, and I am the Artistic and Administrative Director of Beacon Dance, a small dance organization headquartered in the B Complex in southwest Atlanta. I am here this morning on behalf of our organization and the community that we serve to urge you to vote to restore the 1.7 million in funding that was cut from the arts budget for FY '25, and to share with you at least some of the ways that this action would impact our community. Beacon has been serving the greater metro Atlanta area for almost 64 years now, and our mission has always centered education and cultivation through dance and movement. Of utmost importance to our organization is putting art into service for social justice, and to that end, we have engaged with our community to listen and respond. Because we have a strict policy of ensuring we have sufficient funds to pay for any of our programming before we commit to that programming, we are realistic in how we plan. This summer, when we received notification from several of our public funders of the amounts that we would be, that they would be investing in our organization, we found ourselves in a difficult position of having to scale back from what we had initially hoped to provide to our community. Since much of our FY '25 programming has already taken place, that meant a scaling back of our fall production specifically. The reinstatement of the 1.7 million would be a true lifeline to restore the full scope of the fall programming that we had planned for our community through not just those funds-
Fifteen seconds.
-but the matching funds that come from our community as well. Thank you for considering this extremely impactful action.
Next five speakers, Saif Hassan, Jane Williams, Reed Stilson, Rachel Glover, and DuVon Robinson.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Saif Hassan, and I am a freshman at Georgia State University. I just graduated from a public high school in Georgia, and I just turned 18, and so I love the state, and that's what brings me here today, because I do love the state. And what I- And when I turned 18 just last month, I was excited, not because I was finally adult, but because that means I get to vote. And for the past two years, even before I could vote, I've been knocking on doors in Fulton County. I've been talking to our neighbors, teachers, just members of the community, because I want to protect what I care about, even if I wasn't old enough to do it. And now that I am, it's even more important to me. And so, not to be a broken record here, but I'm going to be, because I'm going to speak on behalf of the young people in Fulton County, to say we also care about this stuff. The Fulton County Board of Elections is incredibly important, and to elect people that don't represent us is truly a disgrace to what it means. I've spoken to students, not just at my high school, but in college now too, who worry about making it to the ballot box in the middle of class. I've talked to elderly voters on the doors with mobility issues who rely on mail-in voting. Fulton County deserves a Board of Elections committed to fair and free elections, who will make voting as accessible as possible for every Georgia voter. That's why we need to vote no on the appointment of Julie Adams and Jason Frazier. Not just for the citizens and taxpayers of Fulton County, but also for the young people who also are impacted by this type of... This type of, what's the word? Wild appointment.
10 seconds.
Yeah. The pressure from the GOP is too much to ignore, but we have to. We have to ignore it, because more than ever, we want to protect what matters most. That's our future. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jane Williams, Fulton County resident, a concerned resident. First, I want to thank you all for your bravery and commitment to protect our election and our election process. Since 2013, when Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act was dismantled, to the passing of Senate Bill 202, our voting rights have been under attack. It has spread like wildfire throughout America. I urge you to reject the nominations of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams, for the sake of our democracy. Thank you.
My name is Reid Stilson. I'm a Fulton County resident. I live and work in the Buckhead area, where I'm a leader of a local coffee shop and a community hub. In my work and daily life, I have the privilege of speaking with and getting to know hundreds of my neighbors and fellow community members. I'm here today to express something that is both an urgent concern of mine, as well as a bipartisan concern I hear expressed repeatedly by members of our community, and that is the fear that a core tenet of our democracy, a free and fair election process, is under threat. Refusing the certification of an already vetted and verified election is wholeheartedly undemocratic. Attempting to remove valid voters from the rolls while claiming without evidence that they are ineligible is also undemocratic. I urge you all to remain steadfast in refusing to appoint any member of any party that, by virtue of their actions, has shown not to be trustworthy in the certification of a fair and free election process. We should not be entertaining the idea of appointing someone to our Board of Elections who aligns themselves with insurrectionists and the fraudulent Stop the Steal movement. To my Fulton County colleagues in the GOP, I urge you to submit new, properly qualified candidates for appointment to our Elections Board. I find it hard to believe that there is not a single other candidate qualified to serve on this board. And to leverage our legal system against commissioners who are merely exerting their right to vote freely as they so choose is not only a gross misuse of taxpayer dollars, but further degrades an already waning trust in our government. So please, listen to your constituents. Do right by us and by all of Fulton County. Vote no on the appointments of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams, and give us trustworthy candidates to run our free and fair elections. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Rachel Glover, and I am the associate director of the ACLU of Georgia's Voter Access Project and a proud District Six resident. We work to ensure that voting is easy and accessible for all Georgians at the ACLU of Georgia. The ACLU of Georgia is not part of the litigation pertaining to the appointment process and does not take a position on it, but we do have grave concerns with Jason Frazier and Julie Adams as candidates to the Fulton Board of Elections. They pose a danger to the rights of hundreds of thousands of voters. Frazier and Adams have well-documented involvement in a voter suppression network, the Election Integrity Network, founded by Cleta Mitchell, who notoriously advocated to overturn the 2020 election and advised President Trump to fine votes in Georgia. Jason Frazier has filed nearly 10,000 voter challenges in Fulton alone, baseless mass challenges that intimidate voters, overload election officials, and undermine trust in our elections. He's worked to purge voters during federally protected periods, promoted false claims about Dominion machines, and targeted election workers by name, putting public servants at risk. Julie Adams has similarly spread election disinformation and even refused to certify the 2024 primary. She joined the Election Integrity Network while serving on this very board and worked behind the scenes to push an illegal rule change that would have allowed local officials to block certification of election results, something a state Superior Court judge struck down as unconstitutional. Let me be clear, these individuals are not here to serve voters. They're here to advance a political agenda. As we approach the 2026 election cycle, we should be concerned about these candidates' track records of pushing disinformation, encouraging harassment, and jeopardizing our democratic norms.
15 seconds.
Fulton County needs election officials who will protect the right to vote, not weaponize the process to suppress it. Thank you.
Last six speakers in Assembly Hall, please come forward. Bjorn Cole, Lindsay Coats, Kathy Woolard, Hope Mays, Charmaine Minifield, and Marissa Pyle.
Hello, my name is Bjorn Cole, resident Fulton County and also a beneficiary of an in-town institution supported by our local arts funding. But today, I stand to comment on the appointment of election officials nominated by the Georgia GOP. I first would like to thank Commissioners Barrett and Ivory for bringing this to a head. This is a hard situation. I typically do not advocate for the pressing against our laws. However, while this law is being adjudicated in the courts, it is worth examining the situation, and we are in an unusual situation. I worry particularly about the data implications of the appointment of Mr. Frazier. We do not want to find the next Chuck Azell in our voter systems, in our voter systems. For those that don't know him, Mr. Azell had become an acting director of OPM and completely bypassed their rules and provided unvetted staffers who hadn't yet even finished their background checks deep into sensitive employment data systems at the OPM. This led to months of chaos and lawsuits about the employment status of an incredible number of federal employees. What if Mr. Frazier decides he wants a little help finding new registrations to challenge and asks a DOGE staffer to copy our data to an insecure server for the analysis? Completely outside the rules, I'm sure, but that hasn't stopped anyone at the federal level, so why not here? I know this sounds unhinged, but unfortunately, this is a time in which describing things accurately and directly can make one sound a little nuts. Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Lindsay Coats and a Fulton County resident. Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am also here to urge you to vote no on the appointment of Julie Adams and Jason Frazier. I am not going to add any new info that you haven't heard over the past appointment hearings. I would like to implore the Commissioners, though, to, specifically the ones who were elected as Democrats and have not spoken up yet or missed votes, to share where they stand on this issue. Voters supported you because we believed you would defend democracy when it mattered most. Choosing not to be here or to vote, or refusing to tell the public where you stand on this issue, is not leadership. Silence in this moment does not protect democracy, it weakens it. We need clarity and courage from every Commissioner entrusted with this decision. The path forward is clear. The Fulton Republican Party should put forward two new credible nominees, individuals committed to protecting voting rights, not tearing them down, renominating Jason Frazier despite community opposition, and Julie Adams. And a documented record of bad faith shows how little regard they have for public trust. For the integrity of our elections, the confidence of Fulton County voters, I urge you to vote no on these appointments. Our community deserves Election Board members who build confidence, not sow division and doubt. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Woolard. I'm the former chair of the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections. And, you know, I really want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to do that job. Did it one and a half times. I went through the seven stages of grief when I got through that appointment, because I thought, I really don't want to do this. But I learned so much, and having been a candidate and been on the ballot many, many times, it was really a pleasure to be able to do that. And it was a pleasure, because the first time around, I served with two Republican members, Dr. Kathleen Ruth and Mark Wengate, who, despite the fact that we had sometimes different priorities, understood how important good governance was, understood how we had to come together in an ethical, nonpartisan way, identify priorities for the department, and deliver on those things together. And I'm happy to say, probably 99% of the time, we had unanimous votes on virtually every question that came before us. We worked through things. Sometimes, those priorities weren't mine, but we came together and we understood what we needed to do. Fast forward to my second opportunity to do this, when we had Julie Adams in Mykecon, who could never be in the room with us to set priorities for the staff, to follow up and be accountable. And even when I gave Julie Adams virtually every single thing she asked for that had been denied to her prior to my arrival, she filed suit that afternoon, saying that she hadn't received any of those things. So we have the experience of understanding that Julie Adams, and many people have said it far more eloquently than I can, we have the experience of understanding she cost taxpayers money, she is disruptive to the organization, and she kept the staff in a state of high disarray with these crazy requests.
15 seconds.
So you know what to do. I hope that you'll let the legal process go forward, and I hope you will encourage the GOP colleagues that have nominated these people to come forward, people who are qualified and willing to do the job. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Hope Mays, and I am from the city of Mountain Park in North Fulton. And I don't have a lot of prepared statements, because I wanted to come down here and show you that we care. There are some young people here who are saying they're here because they really care about what you do and that democracy matters, and there are seniors like me who are also here and geographically challenged to get down here for these meetings in person. So I really appreciate your service and your commitment to making democracy work for us. Some of the things people have been saying, I've just been taking the notes, things that are outstanding to me, the "shall or must" question has made an impact on me when I think through this. The election integrity is what we're really talking about, and yet there's an election integrity network that seems to counter what we really mean by that. The nominees have been rejected before, and I think they should be rejected again, and I think that they should have some new nominees put before you. The reminder of January 6th is certainly impactful. And I thank you for letting me come up here and speak, because it's very hard to do that. But I also encourage you to support the funding of arts in Fulton County. Thank you.
My name is Charmaine Minifield. I'm the great-granddaughter of Orly Fuquay. I am here representing the arts in order to encourage you all to support the arts. I am on my own Sancofa, returning to my own family history, to find the Minifield family actually rests at Southview Cemetery, the survivors of the 1906 Atlanta Race Massacre. The Praise House Project rests there now to acknowledge this history. I join my colleagues in the work of resistance in this moment in history where our narratives are under attack. And September 21st in 1906, a white mob tour from Five Point Station not far from here, which wasn't Five Point, through the fairly popular district, targeting Alonzo Herndon's businesses and finally Auburn Avenue, three days later ended in Brownsville in South Atlanta, which is where Southview rests and the victims rest there. They were met with resistance from citizens who took up arms in defense of their democracy and their bodies and community. We are remembering that history by honoring those who rest at Southview, and we're asking for reinvestment into that community. We have a cross-sector coalition of arts organizations and nonprofits who are doing social justice work in that area. I feel that this is a moment that is a significant opportunity for our community to stand on the truth of history and our own narratives, where at a federal level, our stories are being erased. They cannot remove the name of my grandmother.
15 seconds.
They cannot remove the name of my great-great-grandfathers that rest at Southview. They cannot forget John Lewis, Dr. King, Alonzo Herndon, John Wesley Dobbs, Geneva Hoggabrooks, and all of those who rest at Southview. Please support the arts, that we can continue this work.
My name is Marissa Pyle. I'm with All Voting as Local Action in Georgia. On today's agenda, as we've heard once again, is the nomination by the Fulton County Republican Party to the Board of Elections. And once again, I want to highlight the potential harm that these individuals pose to Fulton County's voters and to Fulton's election infrastructure. Julie Adams is a regional director for Cleta Mitchell's Election Integrity Network, a national organization that actively advocates for policies that have the impact of both undermining elections and disenfranchising voters. In her role, she's worked with affiliated board members to push disinformation, undermine certification, and drive narratives that simply put, harm our voters. Last year, she was instrumental in bringing the anti-certification rule that a judge later ruled was illegal, unconstitutional, and void, and she continues to make unfounded allegations about Fulton County's voting processes and election results. Jason Frazier, who is also affiliated with EIN, is a co-developer of the Eagle AI software that is pushed by bad actors as a way to challenge voters and identify so-called fraudulent registrations, despite itself being riddled with errors and inaccuracies, and whose cofounders has suggested that it's illegal for college students to register at a dorm address. He is also, Frazier, in real time, right now, watching this meeting and implying that public commenters are somehow committing crimes on posts on his Twitter, notably rather than attending today's meeting. Frazier has also used litigation to drag the county into federal court over allegations of registrations of inaccuracies, with a lawsuit so poorly constructed that his own legal team later withdrew it. This is in addition to what initially gained him prominence, challenging the registrations of nearly 10,000 Fulton voters. He has also continually attacked Fulton's election staff and processes, called for DOGA intervention, and...
15 seconds.
...Fulton County's entire dissolution. It is deeply concerning to me and many others that these individuals could have a key role in the administration of our elections, and I ask you to seriously consider the implications of this role for voters and election staff who serve Fulton voters every day. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, we have 25 speakers on Zoom.
All right. Let's go.
We have 25 people on Zoom to speak today, and the first person to speak is Matt Ruinsack.
20 questions, can you hear me?
Not really.
Part of all the chairmen, we need to get that taken care of. That's very hard on a constituent's ear, so I don't know if that's on our end or the caller.
We're going to try to resolve the issue and get back with you.
We're going to try to resolve the issue and get back with you.
All right, go to the next person.
Next person to speak is Kevin Mo Downey.
Good morning Commissioners. Shall means shall. When the law reads, "The Board shall certify the election results according to the court," the BRE members shall or must certify election results, even if the lack of data suggests otherwise. When the law reads that this Board shall approve the major parties' nominees to the BRE, it is simple, you approve. The law says nothing about veto power. The fact that you may disagree with the nominee's politics is immaterial. If the nominee fits the three qualifications, you approve. Differing political views actually balance an authoritative Board. Kathy Willard, a lobbyist for the extreme-left organization Fair Fight, was appointed and approved as the Chair of the BRE. I didn't agree with her politics. The BOC members, intent on unlawfully blocking these nominations or wasting taxpayer dollars with nothing but stall tactics. Are they worried something will get exposed? We are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic. We abide by laws. Feelings have nothing to do with it. The law is abundantly clear. You shall approve and follow the law. Thank you very much.
Next person to speak is Matt Ruinsack.
Good morning Commissioners. The gross ignorance and hypocrisy that has come out of this chamber this morning from public comment and some on this Board, thank you for that and exposing yourselves to the public where common sense and rationale is usually the norm. Let's start with legislator Josh McLaurin, who said, "We have to protect the basic contract of our government because it's being violated." So I guess the basic contract of our government is we don't elect our legislators who make laws and then we're not supposed to follow them? Does that include the basic contract of our government? He also mentioned we have to keep our democracy strong. Once again, so he is advocating to violate our laws to keep our democracy strong? Then we have Chief of Staff Congressman Akeema Williams, who said, "We must safeguard our elections." So we must safeguard our elections by violating our law. And he mentioned, "We must protect against the infusion of partisan politics." Well, there's only one side that is advocating for the violation of the law. There was another comment made about bipartisan. Nope, I'm only hearing from one side. Ms. Baldwin from the Georgia Democrat Party also said, "We have to care about the rule of law." Well, how do you care about the rule of law when you're advocating for elected officials to violate it? And then she commented on Ms. Adams, saying she exposed the county litigation. The county's in unnecessary litigation right now. And to many of the public commenters, I'd encourage you, have you actually read the law? Because it is blatantly clear that you have not. There are so many regurgitating propaganda, and they are grossly uninformed. Board, this is simple. Appoint the nominees.
Next person to speak is Lisa Adler.
Hello Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Lisa Adler, a 43-year Fulton County resident, parent, co-artistic producing director, and co-founder of Horizon Theater Company, now in our 41st season of contemporary theater and arts education programs at our home in Little Five Points in Men Park, and a passionate advocate for the arts. You will have before you a motion today to restore the $1.7 million budget to the Contracts for Services Arts Budget. We truly appreciate that you made good on the promise you made in February to bring this back to the Commission in August, when and if there were funds available for it. Now that there is a known budget surplus, I urge you to vote to restore these funds. I've spoken about this with Commissioners Barrett and Ivory and the Chief of Stack for Commissioner Abdurrahman. Commissioner Arrington, I know you have been unwavering in your support of the arts. I know that there is some discussion about process and how things need to get done appropriately on the Commission. But I would really urge you to look beyond these issues and find a way to come together. If not today, then soon. So that your concerns on process can be worked out, and this motion can pass at another meeting soon. Think about the hundreds of thousands of citizens in Fulton County who benefit directly from these arts programs and the extreme current fragility of arts organizations right now that Chris Escobar spoke about. I personally and many others in the arts have devoted our lives to providing arts to this county. Fulton County is the crowning jewel of the entire state, and that is directly because since the 1980s, the arts have been supported and appreciated in Fulton County. Please, please, continue that legacy. Talk to each other, talk to the staff, work together to make it possible to restore this arts funding. Thank you for your support.
Next person to speak is Laura Hennehausen.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Good afternoon Commissioners, my name is Laura Hennehausen. I have been a resident and a worker in Fulton County for the past 20 years. First, I want to thank you for reconsidering reinstating the budget for the arts. The willingness to revisit this issue shows that you are listening and that you understand how much the arts mean to the people of this county. I especially want to thank Commissioners Barrett and Thorne for joining us at the recent FCAC reception. Hearing you share your own personal connections to the arts reminded us all that it is not an abstract issue. The arts are about people, community, and the things that make life here meaningful. I also want to be clear, without this additional support, many of our arts organizations will not survive. That means jobs will be lost, tax revenue will be lost, and we will lose the magic the arts bring to our neighborhoods, our schools, and our public spaces. The data backs this up. According to the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study, audiences spend an average of $38.46 per person, per event, on things like dining, shopping, parking, and childcare, beyond the cost of admission. Visitors from outside the county spend even more, on average $60 per person, bringing new dollars into our community. This is real economic activity we risk losing if the arts fade. Investing in the arts is not just about beauty and creativity. It is about protecting jobs, strengthening businesses, and keeping our county vibrant and competitive. Thank you for recognizing that when you support the arts, you're supporting the people, the economy, and the very character of this community. Thank you.
Next person to speak, Emma Lotte.
Good morning. I'm here to reject Jason and Judy on the election board. They're in denial. And I look at some of my senior citizens through my community. I've been living here for 40 years. And they're running scared as it is. We don't need people coming in, putting in false claims. And now they're talking about money. I think Jason and Judy is wasting voters' money, taxpayers' money, with all these false claims. We don't need a bruise of power on these election boards. And I want to thank Mo Ivory for bringing this up. And I will stand with them. I will stand with my commissioners. We'll fight to the end. And I would not elect them. And we need to do better. I know they're not for our board. Can they nominate somebody else? Nominate somebody that do not abuse power? Do not need to elect voters? Our voters, our bosses, our vote. And we already going through this. I got to take senior citizens down there to see if they still eligible to vote. And when they're taking our vote from us. And I don't think it's fair for the people.
15 seconds, man.
We need to start thinking about, what are we going to do? And who is not with us on this to reject Jason?
Next person to speak, Stephanie Jewett.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Stephanie Jewett. I'm a Fulton County resident who was with you during the last Board meeting. I am here to remind you that what we are facing today is bigger than two appointments. This is about whether Fulton County will stand strong against authoritarianism and the undermining of our democratic institutions. It matters that we call authoritarianism by name because it is what's happening to our country. If we allow MAGA extremists and election deniers like Jason Frazier and Julie Adams onto our Board of Elections, our elections may no longer be free or fair. Authoritarians like Donald Trump depend on loyalists and local government. When his administration gives illegal orders and wants something done, election deniers will not stand up for the people of Fulton County. We deserve officials who protect democracy, not those who conspire to erode it. Commissioners Ivory and Barrett, thank you for having the integrity to do what is right for our county and for our country. I urge every Commissioner on the Board to stand firm and vote no. Thank you.
Next person to speak, Maggie Goldman. Next person to speak.
Okay, I think it worked now. I found the mute button. Somebody asked me, I'm mute. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Maggie Goldman in District 1. So I would like to make the point that everyone who says that these members shall be appointed misses the point that it says, "By the governing authority of Fulton County," after that. And in the third section of the one with the political appointees for the chairperson, it merely says, "Which member shall be designated permanent chairperson?" It does not say how that person is appointed. Yet, we know that you need four affirmative votes to get a chairperson of the Board of Elections by the practice of this body. And in the Fulton Code itself, it says that you need four affirmative votes shall be required for said Board of Commissioners to take any official action. Therefore, you cannot take any official action without four affirmative votes. And even when you have a situation with outside appointees, like the Development Authority, two additional members shall be at-large members with one member selected and nominated by the Fulton Board of Education or the Atlanta Board of Education. In the Fulton Code, it says, "For final approval by the full Board of Commissioners." So I urge you to continue to reject the nominations of Julie Adams and Jason Frazier. And I insist that the Republican Party nominate acceptable nominees for their positions that they are seeking. Thank you.
Next person to speak, Carrie Dix. Next person to speak, Adeline Kumar. Next person to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Adeline Kumar, and I stand before you as a concerned citizen of Fulton County, deeply invested in our community's well-being and governance. Today, I want to address a matter that weighs heavily on the integrity of our local government, the importance of upholding the law. As elected officials, you are entrusted with the responsibility to serve all constituents, and that includes adhering to the legal obligations that our system is built on. Failure to comply with the law not only undermines public trust, but also seats a dangerous precedent for governance. Our community depends on you for leadership, guidance, and transparent decision-making. Delaying compliance, particularly in relation to the outstanding fines and legal responsibilities, sends a message that adherence to the law is optional. This is not just about legal obligations. It is about moral integrity and accountability. Moreover, I urge you to expedite the appointment of Jason Frazier and Julie. I look forward to seeing positive action from this Board collectively and hope for a more united and law-abiding Fulton County. Thank you for your time.
Next person to speak, Emma Lotte.
I spoke already. I already spoke.
Thank you ma'am, next speaker.
Next person to speak, Cody Colfield. Cody Colfield. Next person to speak, Debbie Vett. Debbie Vett. Next person to speak, Denise Wright. Denise Wright. Next person to speak, Derek Holloway. Derek Holloway. Derek Holloway. Next person to speak, Joseph Jones. Joseph Jones. Joseph Jones. Next person to speak, Kirk Beasley. Kirk Beasley. Next person to speak, Joseph Jones. Joseph Jones. Next person to speak, Derek Holloway. Next person to speak, Stephanie Jewett.
Point of order Chairman, there seem to be quite a few people that are not speaking. Is there an issue on our end? I just want to make sure.
No Commissioner.
Thank you.
That concludes the Zoom comments for today.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, let's continue. But let me, before you do that, State Senator Nan O'Rourke came, has come in. Good to see you. She was not here when the other legislators were recognized.
On Page 6, County Manager's Items Under Open and Responsible Government.
Oh, wait a minute, before we do that, let me remind us Commissioners that our Rules of Decorum, they refer not only to us as Commissioners, but they also refer to comments that we may make about staff as well. So I encourage you to read and reread our Rules of Decorum and be mindful of any comments that we may make regarding staff. Thank you, continue.
On Page 6, County Manager's Items Under Open and Responsible Government, 250637 Finance, Presentation Review. Finance, Presentation, Review, and Approval of the September 3, 2025 Budget Soundings and Resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item that's before the Board today is a modification to the annual Hardware and Software Maintenance and Support List. It's for the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities. It is an action that is necessary in order for us to pick up and place a software contract in the county's name. It was, came to us through the completion of the Behavioral Health Crisis Center, and this is where it's rolling off from being in the contractor's name to being in the county's name. It is an $18,000 add, and funding is already available within the department's budget.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Thorne, seconded by Commissioner Abdu-Raqman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. 250638, Information Technology, Request Approval to Extend an Existing Contract for the Upgrade of the County's Enterprise Resource Planning Software Application in an Amount of $577,190.
All right. Favorable motion by Commissioner Abdu-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open.
Yes, sir. Vice Chair. Yes. Could you just comment on where we're at in terms of getting the implementation and is it on track or potentially delayed? So just sort of why we're extending it.
Yes, sir. Good morning, Kevin Kerrigan, CIO. So this is for the independent verification and validation consultant that's helping us oversee the effort. So the project, because of our cyber incident, we actually started a bit later on our 17-month timeline for implementation, and when we engaged with ISG, we had that end early. So we want to extend that out to cover the warranty period as well, once we go live with ERP. I will say we've had some challenges with the ERP implementation, specifically around getting confident around payroll processing and be able to process all of our unique payroll environments within one platform, which is what's changing as we go from our existing version to the new version. We're having conversations around whether we can stick with our go-live date of late November, or we would need to extend with our partner vendor CGI. So I am gathering information. I think we'd come back with an update there on where we sit, once we know definitively that we need to extend out at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
And the motion passes unanimously. 250639, Real Estate and Asset Management, Request Approval of the Lowest Responsible Bidder for Abatement and Demolition Services for the Knights Inn and Red Roof Inn Hotels in the Amount of $1,467,000.
All right. Motion to adopt by Commissioner Abdu-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250640, Request Approval to Utilize Corporate Purchasing in a Total Amount Not to Exceed $2,331,442 to Provide Gasoline and Diesel Fuel for Fulton County Fleet Vehicles.
Motion to adopt by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On Page 7, 250641, Request Approval of a Recommended Proposal in a Total Amount Not to Exceed $7,995,900 for the Renovation and retrofit of Two-Story Building.
All right. Motion to adopt by Commissioner Abdu-Raqman, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. Under Health and Human Services, 250642, Public Works, Request Approval to Increase Spending Authority in an Amount Not to Exceed $1,047,112 to Provide Miscellaneous Construction Services for the Fulton County Water Distribution Network.
All right. Motion to adopt by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. 250643, Request Approval to Increase Spending Authority in an Amount Not to Exceed $848,021 to Provide Miscellaneous Construction Services for the Fulton County Water Distribution.
All right. Motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Abdu-Raqman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Commissioner Action Items.
Okay, stop for a moment. So these next five items, for those, I think a couple of you were not here in the beginning, I had ruled that these were not properly before us, but that this was a practice rule, this rule to file. I will clarify that, so we'll all have the same understanding of what a motion to file means going forward. However, since they're on the agenda today, I also rule that we will hear them since they're on the agenda and placed on the agenda by Commissioner Ivory. Commissioner Arrington, do you want to be heard?
Well, yes, Mr. Chair, because we also did a motion to file on these two failed nominations. So, you know, I just need to know what it is we're doing. You know, either these things can come back, or they cannot. I'm happy to vote on the Arts Items and the Budget Items and support those, but either there is a motion to file, or there is not.
Right. I agree with you, and we all have the same understanding of the motion to file. The difference in the one that's coming back with respect to the BRE is that it's my understanding that Commissioner Thorne asked that the one that did not receive the majority vote be removed, and that she was replacing it with what's on the agenda today.
Okay. I mean, let's get to it.
Commissioners, Action Items, 250644, Request Approval of a Resolution to amend Fulton County's Current Budget to Increase the Departmental Budget of the Magistrate Court in the Amount of $611,939 sponsored by Commissioner Ivory.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington is seconded by Commissioner Ivory. Good. Mr. Ellis, you have the floor. Vice Chair Ellis.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. We had a lot of discussion about these items at the last meeting, so I'm not going to belabor that, and I'll offer up a substitute motion to file.
All right. There's a substitute motion to file.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded.
Point of order. I'd like for the county attorney to speak to the motion to file as a practice that is not codified, and how we are able to use a motion that is not codified, and what is needed to move forward on that.
So, excuse me. As we discussed at the beginning of the meeting.
Speak up, Madam County Attorney.
Sorry. Excuse me. As we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, a small board such as this board has the ability to utilize motions and actions that are not necessarily codified in Roberts Rules or procedural rules if the meaning is understood by all of the members. If that is the case, then you have the ability to take action on those items under the normal rules of voting as if it were a recognized or codified motion.
Okay. So I do not agree to that practice if it requires a full agreement of the Board to abide by a practice that has happened in full awareness. I do not agree to that.
All right. Motion on the floor is to file. Commissioner, I want to get to you. Mr. Ivory had the floor. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I want to note that there have been multiple occasions on which this Board has used a motion to file, and the public has been completely confused by what it is, because it's not defined anywhere in Roberts Rules, and it's not defined anywhere in our procedures. While it is a precedent, we're not told about it when we come on as new Commissioners. We sort of learn it by osmosis from sitting here. That is not a practice we should be okay with, and we should be, you know, not using this at all until it's codified. That said, I also want to be clear that my colleagues are choosing to file or table or hold this item because they do not want to be on the record voting no on money for the magistrate court.
Commissioner Ivory, you want to be heard again?
As elected Commissioners, it's our responsibility to vote on behalf of the people who elected us, not to let procedural shortcuts or uncodified rules dictate outcomes. Transparency is critical. Our constituents deserve to see how we make decisions, understand our reasoning, and trust that their voices guide our votes. Everyone who continues to rely on this motion today is using it to avoid accountability and to hide from the public how they will vote, whether that is on the arts, magistrate court, public defender, veterans, and seniors. The public has a right to expect that their government operates openly and fairly, not as a tool for political maneuvering behind the scenes. Upholding that trust is core of why we serve. Motion to file looks like an anti-transparency tool to keep your vote off the record.
Commissioner Thorne, you want to be heard?
Yeah, now I do. Oh. Okay. You can go after me. Really, Commissioner Ivory, it's about procedure. It's about process. I could come down here and just add things to the agenda. I want to spend $200,000 here. I want to spend $400,000 here, not talk to any of you, and then just say, "You must be against it." I could say, "Let's give it to, I don't know, my church. My church needs money." Have us all vote, not even talk to the county manager, talk to the finance team, just put stuff on the agenda. I am not against the magistrate court. I am not against veterans. I'm not against arts. I'm not against the public defender. I think there's a proper process and procedure of trying to decide, "We have money. What do we need to do with it?" At our last meeting, we just were notified that we're probably going to have to spend $1 billion on a jail. Do all of you tax people who came down here and said, "Please don't raise our taxes," the hundreds of people who came down here, is that the responsible thing to do? "Oh, we have extra money now. Let's just go ahead and spend this year." Commissioner Ivory, I am appalled that you put those words in my thoughts telling me what I am thinking. I am trying to be fiscally responsible with the money we have. So please do not say I'm covering up my vote by making a motion to file, by approving a motion to file. Talk to me. I've been trying to meet with you for two weeks to talk. Let's talk. Let's have a conversation. And all of you out there, I'd love to have a conversation with you anytime. Don't just attack. Don't just label people. Don't call names. Be able to stand up for what you stand in. Find mutual ground. That's the reason we're so dang divided here, is because you guys don't talk. You stay in your echo chambers. You listen to the propaganda that's put out by your side, the other side listens to the propaganda by their side. We have to talk. We have to decide how money should be spent, and it should be the entire Board in the process on board with putting this money this direction. It's the taxpayer. It's the taxpayers' money that we're taking out of their pockets, and one Commissioner is deciding, "I want to put this on the agenda." And that's just not proper. Thank you.
Commissioner Abdu-Raqman.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm not going to belabor the point, other than ACCG offers courses to us to become a certified Commissioner. If you become a certified Commissioner, you know rules, processes, and the correct way to do things. But more importantly, everybody here should know, because I stated in my inauguration, if you do not have a conversation with me, the vote is no. I will not entertain it. Why did I say that at my inauguration in January? Because as adults of somewhat mid-level intelligence, if we are colleagues, we should be able to talk to each other. We should be able to sit down. We're not going to always agree. That's life. You don't agree with your husband. You don't agree with your children. You don't agree with your boss. But you have a conversation. And so at some point, you should have a conversation. And secondly, this is a practice that has been done and accepted. You can't change the practice because you don't like it. All of a sudden, you have voted in the past with the practice, but now that you don't want the practice to be done, you want to label other Commissioners as "they don't want to say this, they don't want to say that." That is not correct. It's wrong, and I'm going to speak to it. I fundamentally disagree with anyone who puts something on the agenda and does not have a conversation with me. I have been very crystal clear about this. There are certain things that are passionate to me, and there are certain things that I am against. But as elected Commissioners, that all of us, all of us, are accountable to Fulton County taxpaying citizens, it is not right to not have a conversation and at least get an idea of what page your colleague is on. I think it's disrespectful, and I'm against that. I'm not against anything that is on the agenda, and no one down here can speak for Commissioner Khadija other than Commissioner Khadija. So with that said, please do not say what my vote, or what I'm trying to or not trying to do, because I speak clearly with my vote.
All right, Commissioners. The motion on the floor is to file. I appreciate if you keep your comments limited to the motion to file. Commissioner Ivory?
Thank you so much. I'm so glad that, you know, this is so golden to me. I'm so glad that ACCG was brought up as a motion to file is not even in ACCG's rules either. So going there would have only just made, you know, brought to bear even more what I'm talking about in Roberts Rules of Order and Fulton County's procedural rules. So I find that to be golden. One Commissioner is always able to add something to the agenda. It's part of the way that it's always been. It wouldn't be on the agenda right now if it wasn't proper and in line with procedure, which is why it's on the agenda again. Punish the little girl that won't get a dance lesson. Punish the little boy that won't get swim lessons. Punish the mother that won't be able to drop her child off at a church funded by the dollars that go from the arts into the community because they want it a certain way. Come talk to me first, but only if you would return phone calls. Only if, when people called, you actually responded to texts. Only if, on yesterday, a phone call was returned. But let's talk about a phone call in January that happened. A long conversation, which went like this. "Can you please hold off on supporting the arts budget because we're in a crisis at the jail? You're a new Commissioner. Believe me, I agree with the arts, and I will give them the money that they need in August if we have a surplus." And then we have a surplus, and that conversation mysteriously disappears and never happened. I already had the conversations. I already made the deal. And then the deal came here for a vote, which Commissioners don't want to be on the record when they say no to the arts. They don't want to be on the record when they say no to veterans. They don't want to be on the record when they say no to seniors, to the magistrate court, or to the public defender, especially if they sit on a judicial board. So let's just be clear what this is, because I've told you this so many times before. I did not come here to play politics. If somebody wants the credit for giving the money to the arts, here, you have the credit. Vote today, and you can have the credit for it. What we're here is to make sure that our constituents get what we promised them that we would give. And we promised we would come here in August, and if there was a surplus, which we have a nearly $70 million surplus, that we would go back and give our departments what they need. And that's honesty. So let's, they can move ahead with the motion to file. They could even not vote yes on giving the money to the arts. You know what this is. You're seeing it for yourself. So you just let the record reflect whatever it is. I'm not here to win, lose, win, lose, put things in my political chest. I'm here to do what's right by the people who voted me into office, and that's what I said that I would do, and I'm doing it.
Commissioner Barrett?
And point of order.
And point of order, Chairman, I would appreciate if, when a commissioner is speaking, that other commissioners didn't also speak at the time that they are speaking. One respect is due another respect, okay? So please, if you could point of order when other commissioners are speaking while commissioners are speaking.
Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been on this board for almost three years now. I am a certified county commissioner. And no one on this board, not one single one of the people here, or Commissioner Hall before you, Commissioner Ivory, has ever called me about an item they put on this agenda. Not one single time, nobody. I've had conversations with commissioners, but no one has called to say to me, "I'm putting this on the agenda, I want to talk about it with you." No one. When I took this job, I was excited to come here and collaborate. I called everybody about my agenda items and soon found out that that practice was just not what this board did. I will say, though, everybody on this board, except you, Commissioner Obtu-Rachman, returns my calls when I call, whether they like me or not. And I do appreciate that. So it's really disingenuous to say that it's not proper procedure to put an agenda item on without calling everybody else on the board. People call to get their four votes, and that's the end of that. So let's just call it what it is. It's not about you should call, and it's not proper to put it on the agenda, it's that they don't want to approve these dollars to be spent this way. Now, I'm a yes for all of these things because I was a yes for them when I asked for them at the time of the budget. And anybody here who is saying that they support the arts but have now voted no on it multiple times, can you really say that? And the same for each of the departments that Commissioner Ivory is trying to fund. Would I have done it the way Commissioner Ivory is choosing to do it right now? Probably not. But that said, given the opportunity to support this, I will support it because I want these departments and these communities to have the funds they need.
Commissioner Thorne, you really want to be heard again?
No, I'll call the question.
All right, question's been called. Is there a second to call a question?
Second.
All right, let's vote on the call of the question.
Is this legal by?
Just a minute, just a minute. It's not debatable.
And the vote is open on call the question? And the motion passes, four yeas, one nay.
All right, the motion before us is to file. Let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to file? And the motion passes, four yeas, three nays.
Next item.
250645, request approval of a resolution to amend Fulton County's current budget to increase the departmental budget of the Office of the Public Defender, Atlanta Judicial Circuit, in the amount of $4,897,313.
Is there a motion? Motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Barrett. All right, Commissioner Ivory, you have the floor.
I'd like to ask the county attorney, as obviously this is going to be a pattern for all of the four votes that come up, to please give me the basis of this motion to file that does not exist continuing to be able to go forward when several commissioners have said that they do not agree with that practice.
So, Robert's Rules does not require agreement with the practice, but just a clarity as to what the motion or the action does. If it is clear to all present that what the proposal is, then, and that is a practice that the body engages in, even if it is not codified, it is allowed to be voted on in the normal course as other items are voted on.
What is, you said agreement of all, agreement of all as to what?
When the proposal is perfectly clear to all present, so it's a clarity, not an agreement. So it's an understanding as to what the intent of the proposed action is, as opposed to a consent.
Okay, I'm sorry, repeat that again?
So it doesn't require agreement of all members, but just a clarity as to what the proposal is.
Okay, and how are you defining the clarity?
I mean, it's not defined in Robert's Rules, but are you, are you clear? I would ask each commissioner, are you clear on what this body's practice of utilizing a motion to file is?
No.
No.
All right, listen. Madam Clerk, we have used this motion to file for how long, since when?
Once I did research, I found it back as far as 1982.
1982, this has been a motion to file, because you do not understand a motion to file does not mean it's not a proper motion. The motion is properly before us, we've all used it, we've all voted for it in the past, and let's move on one way or the other. Commissioner Ivory, you still have the floor.
Chairman, thank you so much for that. I think that what we are dealing with here is a lack of whether, a practice of however many years, a lack of clarifying and codifying what it means. And I do not feel clear, as stated in Robert's Rules of Order, about that, about why we are using a motion to file when we can simply vote. If you do not like what is being proposed, and a motion and a second has been passed, then vote no. Why must you send it to file when you have the ability to vote no and it not pass? It is an avoidance of putting your vote on the record, and therefore, I am not clear about it.
All right, it is a dissim. What is your point of order?
Well, I think there is a lack of clarity about what it means to file even by precedent because when, when the motion to file happened at the last meeting, there was a statement made that that meant Commissioner Ivory could never bring it back. Well, that's not a rule I ever heard before, that a single person can't bring something What does that even mean? I think we need a lot of clarity around this. So, I mean, I think it's very vague what happens after a motion to file, and we need clarity on that.
All right, just a minute. This is not vague. The motion on the floor now is to approve. Motion by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Motion is to approve. Let's dispose of the motion to approve, one way or the other. Vice Chair, you want to be heard? Motion on the floor is to approve.
I'm going to offer a substitute motion to file.
Second.
Do you see this?
All right.
And I'll just offer up another comment, too. You know, we all understand what this means. You deliberately gone out of bounds and created a circus out of it, that's fine, that's your prerogative, you want to bring it back.
I'm the circus?
Just a minute.
Yeah, you have. Everybody understood what the motion to file was.
Vice Chair has, just a minute.
And that was what was made, and I'm making it again. I'm not going to belabor the debate around this whole subject. We had a very healthy debate about it at the last meeting.
All right. Substitute motion is to file. Commissioner Thorne, you want to be heard?
Call the question.
All right, question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Let's vote on the motion to call the question.
And the vote is open on the motion to call the question? And the motion passes, four yeas, two nays.
All right, back to the main motion, which is to file.
And the vote is open on the motion to file? And the motion passes, four yeas, three nays.
All right, next item.
On page eight, 250646, request approval of a resolution to amend Fulton County's current budget to increase the departmental budget for the Department of Senior Services in the amount of $294,000.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. What I'd like to recommend here, Commissioner Ivory, you have the floor. Let's vote it up or vote it down, either approve it or deny it, and we, I'll deal with the motion to file since there's so much confusion, and it shouldn't, we've been voting for this. Some of you have been here, what, six months, others have been here two years, and some time, others longer than that, but we've all voted for motions to file before. But I will clarify this, so there will be no further confusion about what a motion to file means. So the motion before us now is to approve, Commissioner Ivory.
Your point of order.
Yes. Commissioner Arrington?
We just, we just had it, y'all just voted for a motion to file two times, so we can't come back and say now, now we're going to deal with it in the future either. I mean...
No, what I meant was, I'm going to clarify it and write, some have asked that it be in writing, be codified. That's what I meant by that.
Okay, I thought you were saying that we couldn't go forward now.
No, no, no.
Because I'm getting ready to make a motion to file in a few minutes.
Just, Chairman, I just want to ask respectfully that this motion keeps coming up to vote it up or down, but then you're allowing Commissioner Ellis then to put in a motion to file before we vote for that motion up or down. And then you're allowing a call to question on, but then you come back to his motion to file. So why are, why are we not voting on this motion first before he votes to file?
Motion to file was a substitute motion.
Okay, well then, I want to come back after his substitute motion and make a substitute motion before his vote.
Commissioner Thorne has to be recognized. Her motion was to call the question, that takes precedent.
Okay, then I want to call the question on this motion right here.
You cannot call the question after you talk. The first word is out of your mouth, and I'm going to have to have a class on this again.
Please, for everybody.
Okay. What's before us now is to approve. Commissioner Barrett, you want to be heard on the motion to approve?
Call the question.
Madam Clerk? Motion to call the question by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington.
And the vote is open on call the question? And the motion passes, five yeas, one nay.
Back to the main motion, which is to approve.
And the vote is open on the motion to approve? And the motion fails, three yeas, three nays, one abstention.
All right, now, to entertain a motion to deny it, and it won't come back. All right, let's move on.
I'll do a motion to deny.
All right, motion to deny, is there a second? All right, properly moved and seconded, let's vote on the motion to deny. Yes. Commissioner Barrett? Motion on the floor is to deny. A motion by Vice Chair Ellis to deny, seconded by Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner, strike that, Commissioner Thorne. Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
I just want to be really clear about what's going on here, because there's been a lot of motioning and seconding, and we don't even know what we're talking about. We're talking about funding for aging, and this board is about to deny funding for senior services. That's what's happening. I will never vote no on that.
Anyone else want to be heard? Motion is to deny. Let's vote.
And the vote is open on the motion to deny? And the motion passes, four yeas, three nays.
Next item.
250647, request approval of a resolution to amend Fulton County's current budget to increase the departmental budget for the Department of Community Development in the amount of $1 million.
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Barrett, seconded by Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
Call the question.
Question's been called. Let's vote on the call of the question.
And the vote is open on call the question? And the motion passes, four yeas, two nays, one abstention.
All right, motion on the floor is... To approve?
To approve what?
The $1 million for the community developed, 0647.
Veterans.
Veterans.
And the vote is open to approve? And the motion fails, three yeas, three nays, one abstention.
Another motion?
I'll offer up a motion to deny.
Motion to deny, is there a second? Is, all right, properly moved and seconded, let's vote on the motion to...
Can I be heard, please?
Who's that? Commissioner Barrett? Motion on the floor is to deny.
Okay, I want to be really clear, this is a vote for funding for veterans, that this body is making a motion to deny.
Commissioner Ivory?
We've now voted no to seniors, and we're now voting no to veterans, and we've already voted no to our magistrate court, and to the public defender. And a motion to deny, can I please have some clarity from the county attorney what a motion to deny means?
Motion to deny is just an alternative way to vote the matter up or down. It's just the flip side of a motion to approve the item.
And will this item be able to come back on the agenda again?
It, based on practice, it would be treated as if it failed, because it did. It failed for lack of four votes and could come back again.
Thank you so much, I'll bring it back again, everybody, I will bring it back again.
Point of order. I want to re pose a question to you because as a practice, our motion to deny is treated differently than a failure for something to be approved, a lack of four votes. And you need to go and review our practice on that. That doesn't mean it's not come back a second time.
Point of order, we never vote to approve and then make a second motion to deny. I've been here 11 years. There's usually just a motion to approve, and either it passes or it doesn't. So this is something that I have seen for the first time, a motion to approve followed by a motion to deny. This is something I'm seeing for the first time in 11 years.
That's not correct.
It's absolutely accurate.
I'll clarify this.
You were not even here when I came in, in 2015, sir.
That's not correct.
You were not present. You were not present, you have been defeated by John Eves.
All right, motion to deny.
And the vote is open on the motion to deny? And the motion passes, four yeas, three nays.
Next item.
250648, request approval of a resolution to amend Fulton County's current budget to increase the departmental budget for the Department of Arts and Culture in the amount of $1,700,000.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Ivory, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Commissioner Thorne?
I just want to be clear again that I am not against seniors, I'm not against veterans, I am not against arts. This is $294,000 that, nothing specified, let's just give it to them. We have 300 million of unfunded things throughout the whole county. We have departments, and every single department needs more, wants more, has to have more. And we have people dying in a jail. We need to fix our jail, that needs to be a priority. The mental health center in the jail needs to be a priority. So I don't want to hear my fellow commissioners putting words in my mouth, thoughts in my mouth, so I'm speaking directly. I am not against this, it's just we don't have the money right now. We have a surplus, but we're looking at a billion-dollar jail next year. We're looking at raising your taxes. She wants, she wanted to raise them this year, and she told us that she is going to raise our taxes, that is coming. So let's spend now as much as we can so we can... That is coming, so let's spend now as much as we can so we can raise taxes next year. It was a full mill, it was 12 and a half percent raise. We're looking at funding a billion dollar jail. We're looking at a debt service that's probably 100 million per year, that's over a mill raise. That's 1.5 mil. But let's go ahead and spend now, because that's fiscally conservative. Look, we all are having tough times right now. Seniors definitely are, I agree. Seniors are having a tough time, they're having a tough time staying in their homes and paying their taxes. So let's just go ahead and give them 294,000, we don't know what for, just to give them, because we want to say we're for seniors. We don't know what program it's gonna be for, we don't know how it's gonna help them, but hey, seniors, we're gonna raise your taxes next year.
Just a minute, just a minute.
So anyway, I, I know I'm getting off tangent, I apologize to my commissioners, but I really resent the labeling, the false claims that are going on by my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Barrett, you have the floor.
Call the question.
Question's been called, Madam Clerk. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Ivory on the call of the question, let's vote on the call of the question.
And the vote is open on call the question. And the motion passes, six yeas, one nay.
All right, item on the floor is to approve, let's vote.
Vote is open to approve. And the motion fails, three yeas, three nays, one abstention.
All right, next item.
Twenty-five, zero, six, four, nine. Request approval of the appointment of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams to the Board of Registration Elections.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We were advised to have this vote after, if we're gonna have it at all, to have it after executive session so we can be advised by counsel.
Okay, who advised that?
Sorry, I did not hear the question.
Madam County Attorney, I, I, I thought we were going to get briefed in executive session about this particular item before we brought it to the floor. That's what you indicated to me.
I did indicate that in the email that I sent to the board members, which provided information about the current legal posture.
Commissioner Arrington, you want to be heard?
I mean, I think we could benefit from having, having executive session, but I'm, I'm ready to do a substitute motion to file right now. Either, however y'all want to do it.
Second that. Please do the, introduce the substitute motion.
Yeah, substitute motion to file. Oh, yes I am. Well, that, that's a different statement. That's different from me not being in the queue.
Commissioners, please, please. So you were advised by the county, at least we were advised by the county attorney, she wants to discuss this issue in executive session, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Yeah, let me preside, please. So if this motion passes, we will not discuss this in executive session, we'll take it up now. Is that what we want? All right, the motion on the floor is to file.
Point of order.
Just a minute, that's a proper, proper motion, what's your point of order?
My point of order, if we have a commissioner who the county attorney has stated that we should speak about this in executive session, I would have a concern, because I was not aware that this was supposed to be an executive session item. But now that my colleague has brought it up as an executive session item, then I think it would take precedence. So that, I guess I need to hear from the county attorney. Is it an executive session item, or is it not an executive session item?
It is an item that the subject matter is eligible for discussion in executive session if this board chooses to proceed with voting on an action without electing to hear. First, I have provided some legal information and advice previously via written communications. So it's, it's, it's at your pleasure, whether you choose to hear, discuss it first, or act on the motion to file that's currently before you.
Is it an executive session item, Chairman, or not? A yes or no was the fight.
Let, let me opine on this. This is a legal matter, it's currently in the court, therefore it's a legal matter. We typically historically discuss legal matters in executive sessions. Given that, I would ask that we not approve the motion to file and take it up in executive session, even though the county attorney has already written to us on this matter. But it is subject to, and I determine what happens in the executive session. So I think it's more appropriate that we discuss this in executive session. But the motion on the floor is to file.
I have no objection to discussing it in executive session first.
I have no objection to discussing it.
You can withdraw your second.
I'm withdrawing my motion.
And I withdraw my motion. Just a minute, just a minute, just...
It's like a circus over here.
All right, Commissioner Ivory has withdrawn her second, Commissioner Arrington.
And I withdraw my motion for now.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to recess for lunch.
Motion to recess for lunch.
Going to executive session where we would discuss items of litigation, personnel... Real estate. Madam Clerk?
And the vote is open.
All right.
All right, it's all right.
What's up?
Huh?
Yeah.
Huh?
So, I'm gonna ask you something. John Jones was sending water ten minutes ago.
He did?
Wait, that's her previous letter. She must have recent, uh, that's dated June 3rd. Let me see what she sent.
How long would it take to print? She just sent that? She just sent that?
No, that's the letter she sent. These, they're... These, uh, old versions, but they're resenting the old letters.
All right, without objection, we will resume the regular order of business. Items from executive session, Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a motion to approve the requests for representation in items one through four of the executive session agenda?
All right, a motion to approve by Commissioner Obdu Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Barrett. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
Is there a motion to approve a contract for compensation and benefit study in support of compliance with the Justice Department consent decree, the jail consent decree, um, with Siegel for an amount of ninety thousand dollars?
All right, motion to approve by Commissioner Arrington, seconded by Commissioner Obdu Rockman. Please vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously.
No further action items.
All right, next item.
Back on page eight, twenty-five zero six-four-nine, request approval of the appointment of Jason Frazier and Julie Adams to the Board of Registration and Elections, sponsored by Commissioners Thorne and Ellis.
Okay, this has been the subject of, um, quite a bit of conversation, um, some factual, some not factual. But what I've done is taken the time to review the judge's orders in some detail. I watched the news coverage, uh, watched the, uh, three times as a matter of fact, the, uh, FGTV's coverage of, uh, our last meeting. And what I've concluded though is that, uh, first and foremost, I think we'd all agree that we are a nation of laws. But we're at a moment in history in which even the President of the United States himself has set the tone that, uh, if a judge or if a court issues a ruling that he disagrees with, he just ignores it, does what he wants to do. And I think a lot of what's being done now is coming about as a result of what's, uh, what's happening, um, in Washington. And I agree with some statements that have been made that no one can tell me how to vote. I make my own decisions, I do my research and use my best judgment, uh, in terms of what I believe is in the best interest of the people of Fulton County. But in our society, um, we resolve disagreements like this in a court of law and not in the court of public opinion. And while this case is on appeal, we as a board have some decisions to make and I'm hopeful, hopefully we'll make them today. In my analysis, um, I've concluded that we have three options today, three choices. One is to table the matter, which means do nothing and let it play out with respect to whatever the court is going to rule. Number two, we can approve it, the nominations, which should not be a good thing to do for the taxpayers of the county. Or we can deny. And if we deny, I think the clock will continue to run from a financial point of view. I would also say that, um, it just appears to me that the, the prudent approach is to table it to a time or date certain, and if there's any confusion about what that motion means, I'll be happy to explain it versus laying on the table, tabling to a, to a, um, to a time certain in the future. And the other point I'd like to make today and for the public to understand is that there are two names before us that we've rejected in the past, and I voted to reject them in the past. But we are stuck. We are stuck with Julie Adams. I don't think there can be any disagreement about that until such time as the Republican Party, even though her term has expired, she's gonna be on that board until such time as she is, uh, replaced. So that means, and this is really about, uh, Jason Frazier. And while this is on appeal, and we don't know how long it's gonna take, I've been told from the judges that I've talked with and our county attorney and our outside counsel, it could take a month or two months, whatever the ca- or even three months, whatever the case may be, um... On top of this, I would say that the, and we just received, according to what I've just been told, that, um, several state legislators have written to us, not the ones who are here today, but others, and sent a copy of the letter that the, um, uh, President... here today, but others, and sent a copy of the letter that the President Protem, Jan Jones, sent us all last year, expressing her displeasure with how we're handling this. And she is adamant that she is going to introduce legislation, probably at the beginning of the session, if not pre-file legislation, that will make it crystal clear that county commissions have no role whatsoever in appointing people to boards of registration and election as an example of the way it's handled in Gwinnett County. And it's my understanding that that will be a, from her, that this will be a statewide bill, which means that as long as they're in the majority, I'm not sure that we, the Democrats, will be able to stop it. The other thing I'd say is that, worst-case scenario, if Frazier and Adams are approved today, and I don't think they will be, but what does it really mean? If they're on that board, it's a five-member board, two members appointed by the Republican Party, two members appointed by the Democratic Party, the chair, who is a Democrat, appointed by this body. But the practical reality of that is, you have, no matter how, what kind of chaos, confusion that Adams and Frazier can cause, when it comes down to it, it'll come before that BRE, there'll be three Democrats and two Republicans. So theoretically, they won't be able to do a lot. So from my perspective, given the cost to taxpayers, and it's pretty, well, I wouldn't say it's limited, probably we owe probably our outside counsel now, based upon the fees that we have agreed with them, probably $30,000, $40,000. Republican Party, we're paying their bills, probably upwards of $200,000 plus, and that will continue to grow. But if we, it just seems to me, though, that the prudent thing to do is to let it play out before the appellate court, and we seem to be pretty firm in our belief that we'll prevail. And I have to trust what our county attorney and what our outside counsel are saying. So I'm open, but that's how I see it at this point in time, and I'll be waiting to see what the rest of you have to say. Commissioner Thorne, Commissioner Arrington, Commissioner Ivory, Commissioner Barrett.
I look at this as a cost and a benefit. We're costing the taxpayer dollars, like you said, Chairman, to have two members who are gonna be in a minority on a board. They're never probably gonna be able to pass anything. So what's the benefit we're getting by blocking them? What's the cost? What's the court cost that we have to incur, paying our attorneys, paying their attorneys, and then the judge? The judge found us in contempt and ordered us $10,000 a day. Granted, we got the supersidious, so the clock has stopped on that, but the minute it's heard in the appellate court, that clock starts immediately. And he had to grant it. It wasn't like we won anything. He was forced to grant it. But he put a special footnote in the supersidious, saying, notwithstanding the lack of authority, some on the county commission publicly slated the position in their press conference that will do exactly that by choosing to ignore the plain language of the legislation passed by the General Assembly. This was shown in a video recording plaintiff introduced during the contempt hearing. We haven't made friends with the judge. If it comes back to him, it's gonna cost us probably a lot of money. The Republican Party asked for a $1,000 a day penalty. The judge went ahead and said, nope, $10,000 a day penalty. We have not tried to get on his good side. And I wanted to address some of the hypocrisy that's been going on here. You say, we can't tell us how to vote, but yet Julie Adams on the board was told how to vote. She was told she had to certify, even though she wasn't getting the lawful documents she needed to certify, the lawful documents to have the numbered voters list, to make sure that the people who voted equaled the number of ballots cast, and that nobody voted twice. You had to have that numbered voter list with individual numbers. The hypocrisy of saying how the Republicans are weaponizing the courts? Well, we're weaponizing the courts too. We're weaponizing to sue the State Board of Elections to block subpoenas, but yet we say we're transparent, we want fair and transparent elections. But don't look here, don't show us that. The hypocrisy of wasting money on, Julie Adams had these lawsuits, which, it is one lawsuit, but somebody on this commission keeps saying multiple lawsuits, and that is getting out into the misinformation. It was one lawsuit that she had because she did not get those documents she needed for certification. It was one lawsuit. It cost us over $243,000 to defend that one lawsuit. How much is it gonna continue to cost us to defend this one lawsuit? Oh, and then we had the former chair, the Fair Fight Chair. You want somebody neutral? So let's put the chair of the Board of Elections to be a Fair Fight activist lobbyist. She said she got along very well with the previous Board of Election members, Dr. Ruth and Mr. Wingate. But did you know they didn't certify the 2020 election? I guess they're election deniers, because they didn't certify. You know why they didn't certify? Because we admitted that we didn't do signature verification for 147,000 ballots to see if they're valid. But that's okay, just trust us. All 147,000 were good. No, they did not certify the 2020 election because of that and some other improprieties that they saw and they knew had happened. And they, in good faith, cannot say that that election numbers were true and accurate. There's misinformation about Julie saying how you must trust us, I'm giving you all the documents that you need. Well, go watch a Board of Elections meeting and see. You get all the documents spilled out on the table. You can't copy, you can't sort, you can't take them home, you can't read them, you can only look at them while they're on this table, you can only look at the laptop and scroll through, and it's not even the final documents a lot of time, it's the raw data that they give them, and then they say, okay, trust us and certify. So there's two sides here, two sides. There's the one side that says, hey, we wanna trust you, just be transparent, and let's see the documents. Let us monitor the elections. Then there's the other side, he says, no, trust us, you're bad if you try to look at anything, you're denying it, you're an election denier, if you try to look at something, you're bad if you try to check us. Clean the voter rolls, we want clean voter rolls. No, don't clean the voter rolls, how dare you, might mess up and remove somebody that shouldn't be on there. There's two sides. And just like this judge, we came, the Republican Party thought that we shall appoint, the Democrat Party said, no, we have discretionary about it. So we took it to a judge, and we let the judge decide. Well, it didn't go our way, so let's do everything we can to make sure it goes our way. We're not gonna listen to the judge, we're not gonna listen to his order because we don't like it. Isn't that what they accuse the Republicans of doing? Isn't that what they accuse Trump of doing? We have to listen, we have to listen across the aisle, we have to talk, we have to talk it through. Because quite honestly, you guys say, oh yeah, the Republican Party can just appoint two new members. Well, the Republican Party is training with the Election Integrity Network, the entire party. So anybody who goes on the board will probably have some affiliation with the Election Integrity Network. What is Election Integrity Network? Exactly that. It tries to implement processes that are secure, to make sure your vote, when it leaves early voting and it gets to our warehouse and it gets tabulated, that it is one vote per person, that when it gets to tabulation, it is tabulated fairly, it isn't skipped, because we've forgotten to upload results and had to recertify about three times. So we've double-counted votes accidentally, we double-counted absentee ballots, over 3,000 of them accidentally. Clearly, we need new systems, we need new processes, and the two sides need to be working together, not just yelling at each other, not just calling names. So many emails, I mean, they were cut and paste from the Fair Fight website, you know, election denier, remove voter roll challenges, oh, it's too many of them. He's illegal, he's doing something illegal. There's just so much misinformation out there, and I honestly love to have conversations, and I wrote many of you back, saying, love to have, talk about it. This is my side, do you understand my side? I actually started elections, getting involved, because my first election I worked, people were coming in and they weren't on the voter rolls to vote, and we had to park them on a bench. We had people lined up, and it would take us 20 to 30 minutes to get down, hold it downtown to verify if we could let them vote, because we couldn't find their name anywhere. And I'm like, this should not be, it shouldn't be this hard to vote. You shouldn't have to take 20 or 30 minutes. I'm a computer person, that data should be readily available and uploaded. So I made it my mission that I was gonna make it better working elections, and that's what I did for nine years. But the minute I question a process, you're done, you're out of here, you're going against us because you questioned something, now you're election denier. So really, quite honestly, I wish we moved forward, we're gonna get legislation coming through that's gonna make us put, that's gonna make us put Julie and Jason on the board. We're not gonna have that control anymore. So we can fight it, and we can spend money, but just remember, it's your taxpayer dollars we're spending with every fight that we put up. And in the end, Jason and Julie will be put on that board. Thank you.
Commissioner Arrington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know whether to laugh or cry. People are acting as if this is something new. Fulton County did not create the nominations and appointment process. Nominations and appointments have been going on throughout the history of this country. One of the first cases we learned as a law student is Marbury versus Madison, 1803, which dealt with the nomination of Madison as a chief justice. The nominations and appointment process is even written into the U.S. Constitution, the Georgia Constitution, and also our Fulton County Code. The Supreme Court told us in Marbury versus Madison in 1803, 222 years ago, that nomination is not appointment. A nomination is a recommendation, it is a suggestion. And what happens if the nomination does not get the required number of votes for the government to act, it's called a failed nomination. This is not something new. These nominations have failed. And the history and practice of our country for over 222 years is that when a nomination fails, someone makes an alternate nomination, and the alternate nomination gets a vote. So why are we acting like this is something new? Why are we acting like Fulton County did something wrong? It's not our fault that their nominees didn't get the required number of votes for Fulton County government to act. Georgia law is the same, the Georgia Constitution allows the governor to nominate, but the Senate votes to confirm. And if a nominee is not reject, is not, if a nominee is rejected under the Georgia Constitution, they cannot be resubmitted for another year. Here in Fulton County, our own code says, Section 1-73D, that four members of the Board of Commissioners shall constitute a quorum for the transaction of business, but the affirmative vote of at least four commissioners shall, they like that word, they like that word, shall, shall be required for the Board of Commissioners to take official action. Well, let's look at what happened. The nominees did not get four affirmative votes. Since there were, the nominees failed to get four affirmative votes, Fulton County was unable to act. You see no action in this county, not a budget item, not an agenda item, not a widget, not the jail, not the courts, nothing takes place unless there are four affirmative votes. That is also the reason why these two nominations failed. They failed to get four affirmative votes. That's not contempt? That's not illegal or wrong? So they want, imagine this, they want to blame Fulton County for their failed nominees. If you, what typically happens, people don't even make nominations that they know aren't going to get appointed. It's so routine, the law is so settled in this country. The law surrounding nominations and appointments is so settled in this country for the last 220 years, that people don't even make nominations that they know will not get appointed because they don't want their nominations to fail. That's what reasonable people do. Reasonable people then make an alternate or substitute nomination. It is impossible for the county to act. And if, because these nominations failed, and since these nominations failed, there's no way that the county can be in contempt. It's impossible, the county can't take action unless there are four affirmative votes. There were not four affirmative votes, so the county could not act. So it's impossible for the county to be in contempt. And even if it is contempt, it's not willful contempt. Because there was a vote, the county didn't fail, their nominees failed. So instead of accepting that their nominees failed, mind you, one of these nominees was nominated a couple of years ago, and his nomination failed at that time. And what did they do? They went and got, they made an alternate nomination. That's what, that's what you do in America. That's the way the American democracy has run for over 222 years, since Marbury versus Madison, since 1803. That is the way the nomination and appointment process has worked in this country. Anybody remember Neil Bort, who got nominated? His nomination failed. His nomination failed. His nomination failed. So let's be clear, when the votes aren't there, the nomination fails. That is not dysfunction. That is democracy. And no lawsuit, no contempt order, or no shifting of the goals, right? I mean, that's what this is. This is, this is moving the goalpost. Our nominee didn't get appointed, now we're going to go change the rules. We're going to go to the state and change the rules. How about make a better nomination? How about make a better nomination? How about follow 222 years of American jurisprudence? How about follow 222 years of American jurisprudence? Make a substitute, substitute or alternate nomination. And guess what? The legislature knew. The legislature knew when they drafted this law that it was going to be subject to a vote of the commissioners. The legislature knew when they made this law that four affirmative votes would be required for the appointment of a nomination. The legislature knew that when they drafted this law. Why are we trying to act like this is something new? Why are we trying to act like this is something that has never been seen before? This is not unprecedented. This is someone, this is a full frontal attack on the foundation of democracy, on the foundation of American jurisprudence. And instead of going with the rules that they established, instead of going with the rules that they established, they now want to try to come hold somebody in contempt because their nominees failed to get the required number of votes that are necessary to be appointed? The, the language that says "shall" means that the governing authority is the appointing authority. The Fulton County governing authority shall appoint. That means that we are the appointing authority. That's what that means. And then it goes on to say, "from nominations." From nominations. With an S at the end. It does not say from, the governing authority shall appoint any nomination from the party. It does not say the governing authority shall appoint every nomination from either party. It says "from nominations," with an S at the end. That implies that there will be multiple nominations if one of the nominations fails. In this case, both nominations have failed. Yes, sir. I'm, I'm, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. This is America. This is an attack, again, on 222 years of jurisprudence. But not only is this America, this is Fulton County. This is Atlanta, Georgia. This is the home of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And no one, no one on God's green earth can tell me how to vote. No one. Now, the voters can vote me out, but no one is going to tell me how to vote. I'm going to vote my conscience. I have the First Amendment right to freedom of speech. And the judge acknowledges that he can't tell us how to vote, but then says, "Hey, Fulton County's in contempt. If you can't tell us how to vote, we took a vote, the nominations failed." There is a legal term. It's called a failed nomination. This is not something new. So nominations may come from whoever they want to nominate, from any outside group. But appointments, appointments shall, shall be made by the Fulton County governing authority, which is this Board of Commissioners. And appointments belong to the people and their representatives. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an issue of most importance. And I got, came here today against doctor's orders to be here to say this. So thank you.
Commissioner Ivory.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Arrington. Thank you for your passionate thoughts. The right to vote is the cornerstone of our democracy, and those who oversee elections must be fully independent and accountable. We know why this is happening. We know there is an election, very important election, coming up in 2026. And folks are preparing for that, starting with the largest county in Georgia, where a lot of votes turn out from. It's not hard to figure out what's going on. It's actually pretty simple because we've seen it before. When someone shows you who they are, believe them the first time, the second time, the third time, the fourth time, the second time they become president. Just believe they'll do exactly what they said they would do because they are. Bye-bye SNAP benefits. Bye-bye Medicaid. Bye-bye individual states being able and cities to decide how they police their cities. And bye-bye to the Voting Rights Act, because that's what this is about. You can say it's masked in the two names, but it is such a bigger plan. Anybody who is concerned about their vote, whether you are going to vote or you are going to be voted upon and voted upon because you want to put yourself out there for elected office, this is for you. You should be up in arms right now. You should be concerned about what's going to happen when everybody gets in the voting booth in '26 because it's being worked on right now in front of your face. When someone shows you who they are, believe them. Our residents deserve appointees who are unquestionably committed to fairness, transparency, and ethical standards in election administration. It is almost comical to say that this money that is being spent is because of us prolonging a process. This money could stop being spent right now if we were presented with some credible nominees. This is not about personality or politics. It's about ensuring that the Board of Registrations and Elections is held to the highest level of accountability. I'll continue to push for a broad, a Board of Registration Elections that is representative, ethical, and accountable to the people. Because the stakes, the stakes, our democracy and the voices of our residents are simply too high. Let us stay the course to make sure that we can provide an elections board that runs fair, independent, accountable, and transparent elections in Fulton County. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to say I appreciate your comment about the most prudent path right now would be to let the appeals process play out. I will support a motion to table. But if we are going to take it to an actual vote, my vote will remain a no on election deniers. I have the right to my vote. Now, I want to respond also to Commissioner Thorne, who talked about the cost to taxpayers and her, and makes the allegation that Adams and Frazier, should they be appointed, won't have any real power because it's a three to, to majority with our chair being a Democrat. But if they won't have any real power, why is the Republican Party so insistent that it be these two people? Why not just send us two other nominees? They're not going to have real power anyway. But that's not the truth of it. We saw what a disruptor Julie Adams was in the previous two years. Kathy Willard came here and told us about it. We saw it all over the news. You can read about all of the disruptions she caused on that board. And you want to talk about the cost. If the Republicans care so much about saving the taxpayer money, they can end this right now by giving us two new nominees to choose from. So I'll ask real plainly, give us two nominees to choose from, and then we will put them in if they are reasonable and they meet the criteria. In the meantime, I very much agree that we should let the process play out in the appeals court. So I will make a motion to table until the Court of Appeals process runs its course.
Seconded by Abhijit Rockman.
I'm waiting for it to be changed in the, thank you.
Commissioner Abhijit Rockman.
I'll be brief in my comments, Chairman. What I want to speak to today is not the Republican Party. Because see, I'm not a Republican. Even though there are those that would like to present and say I am, I am not. I am a Democrat. However, I would be remiss if I didn't say, on Friday, Fair Fight sent out a text message, an email to the entire community, and had no one's name on it but mine, even though you have five Democratic commissioners here. So democracy, you either want it or you don't want it. Because see, Republicans are not my problem. Policy and those that want things to always go their way when it benefits them is my problem. At the end of the day, I'm going to vote my conscience, but we had a commissioner today to sit here and blatantly allow me and say, "I don't return, I've never returned a call." I will return your call when you call me, but I'm not going to chase you down for your benefit. You see, communication is a two-way street. There's not a party that I want to go bad to. There's not a group that I want to be a part of bad enough to compromise my integrity and morals. I vote policy. I vote issue. Sometimes it may be something that you don't like. Sometimes it may be something that you do like. But at the end of the day, you can't bully me because at the end of the day, the Republicans are not my problem. The Republicans did not take me to court when I won my seat by 80%. The Republicans was not the ones that dumped almost a million dollars in a campaign to unseat me, which was unsuccessful, by the way. I believe that I have been sent here to vote my conscience. Can I be swayed? Probably could. But the best idea starts with having a conversation with your colleague. Whether I like any of my colleagues down here on this side or that side, I respect all of them. And I respect their passion and belief to do what they deem is correct. But in politics, there is no permanent friends. There is no permanent enemies. There are only permanent solutions. At the end of the day, you have to let democracy play out. Democracy can't be a thing that you interchangeably use like a hat to take on and off when you don't like the person. I am not going to bend to threats, which I've been threatened. No big deal. It won't be the first time Commissioner Kadige's been threatened. And I won't bend to what somebody seems to be, "Well, you need to get in line." I'm not a get-in-line person. What I am is a person with integrity. What I am is a person that works for the people. And what I am is a person that believe even on the worst day, democracy will always win. What is right and what is supposed to happen will always win. I have to play my part. And so in saying that, I will agree to table this with my fellow commissioner. Because I believe that this is something that we are going to have to watch to play out. But I will say this in closing. The amount of energy that we have about these BRE appointments, can we get that same energy about all the people that died in the jail? Can we get that same energy about this ever-increasing homeless population that we have in Atlanta? Can we get that same energy about our seniors that are being displaced every day? Don't pick and choose because it's going to give you airtime. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Vice Chair, just one more. On, on that motion to, to, to table, now, let's be real clear on that motion. It's not laying on the table. This is a motion to table until the appellate court rules. That needs to be in there at a time certain. Got it? Okay. Vice Chair Ellis.
So we're clear on this motion?
Sir?
So we're clear on this motion? Clear on the motion that you all have made?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll be brief too. I'll attempt to be brief. Lots been said. Three years ago, I kind of, you know, stood out and staked my position on this. And I'm going to be clear on this again. And that's that the law, as I read it, and as the judge has interpreted it and ruled on it, was that we had an obligation to review the criteria of the people, you know, that were put up for nomination, the very specific criteria. And if those were met, then we had an obligation to ratify those. And up until that point in time, that had been our practice. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, in prior portions of time, these were even on our consent You know, lots been said. But imagine this, Republicans and Democrats disagree on things, including election policy. No surprise. We've known this for a long time. And I believe the law as it was written was constructed to recognize that. That both parties were going to be giving two representatives, as long as they met those specific criteria that were laid out in the, in the law, that would serve and represent their interest on this Board of Elections. And that there would be a fifth nominee who would chair it, who was brought forth by this body and approved by this body. That we could vote up or down based upon what we felt like their characteristics were and, you know, their opinions were on issues, et cetera. And I believe the law was written as it was intended and it was interpreted by the judge. And that was my opinion then, and that was my opinion now, and it's been reinforced by this court ruling. So I will continue to stand by that. And given the opportunity to ratify these appointments today, I will vote to approve them.
All right. Commissioner Thorne.
I just wanted to correct some things for the record. Because it was spoke that Jason Frazier was nominated two years ago in 2023. And we did not approve him then. And the Fulton County Republican Party took us to court. The court delayed, delayed, delayed. Instead of waiting for the inevitable court hearing, whoever that might be, they had put Mark Wingate to serve as the board member on registration elections. He had health issues. He could not continue to serve. So they pulled Jason's nomination. That was the reason they pulled it. They didn't want to fight the lengthy court battle. It was going to be very costly for them. They pulled him and put Julie, nominated her, and we approved that nomination. They pulled him and put Julie, nominated her, and we approved that nomination. So it wasn't that they wanted to pull him. They didn't have the means to fight the fight. Now they have the national, the Republican National Committee is paying. So they're ready to fight all the way down the appeal process, all the way we want to go. They'll fight hundreds of thousands of dollars we could spend as a county. And it was disappointing to see that commissioners were fundraising off of this controversy. I feel like it's a fake controversy, just trying to drum up a fake thing that these people are somehow going to buy-bye to your Voting Rights Act. You're not going to be able to vote anymore. It's so ridiculous. If Jason and Julie did anything that was illegal or harmful or falsely removed anybody, I'd be the first person to correct them. And they would take that correction. Nobody wants to deny anybody's vote. We're all up here. We all want fair, independent, accountable, and transparent elections. That's what was stated that you guys want. Republican Party wants the exact same thing. But let's talk about fair. Is it fair when the Republicans turn a list of voters in, like they do every year? And then all of a sudden, they're like, no, we're not going to hire anybody off your list because the Democrats didn't turn a list in. So we only have to hire an equal number. So we're going to, Democrats didn't turn a list in, so we don't have to hire zero from your list. And then all of a sudden, the laws get reinterpreted like you can't watch multiple polls anymore because there's language in the law that says you can only print a badge, one badge, and on that badge, it can only be one precinct. So we're going to interpret it that way because we don't want you to be able to go and look at multiple precincts, poll watchers. You see, poll watchers were outlawed because of consent decree back in 1970-something. The RNC agreed not to have poll watchers. So Republican Party had zero poll watchers until the judge actually died and the decree after 30 years didn't yet renewed. So 2018 was the first year that the Republicans got to have poll watchers. And all of a sudden, the Democrats come out and say, oh, no, poll watchers are evil. They're election deniers. They're going to block your vote, all these things. So 2020 was the first presidential election that Republicans actually had poll watchers. And for me, it's about being transparent. It's about, show us. If someone running your elections, they are the superintendent of elections. If they want to look at ballot recap sheets, let them look at ballot recap sheets. Don't try to charge them $25 for a piece of paper and make them do an open records request because that's what's happening right now. Oh, you want a copy of a tape coming from a machine? That's $75. I think voter records people are getting charged $400 and some dollars to look at voter rolls every month, every month. You say, well, it could end right now if you just put two more nominees up. Essentially, if the roles were reversed and there were five Republicans and two Democrats on this board, would you want the Republicans blocking your nominees? You have to think about it. That's why the state is going to try to come up with a fair method because partisan commissioners shouldn't be determining who a partisan party wants to represent them on the board. They vote. The party votes for those two nominees. And those are the two they selected. And they should have the right to have the people they represented. We shouldn't be up here saying, oh, no, they need to be more neutral. They're going to cause chaos and havoc. I've been down there. I've watched. I go down to the warehouse. I didn't make it this last election day, but I'm down there pretty much every day to watch. I would just ask a simple question. While I'm sitting there waiting for results to come in, oh, who's the new guy working in tabulation? And I'm told, no, you don't have the right to know. We're not going to tell you to a sitting commissioner. We're not going to be transparent. We want to, we don't want to tell you who works. If anything, this fight to keep Jason and Julie off the board has only strengthened the fight of the Republican Party because you must have something to hide if you don't want these two on there. We could have two new nominees and end it now. Now, the two new nominees are going to be just like Jason and Julie because now we have poll watchers and they've gone through poll watcher training. They've gone through poll watcher training, probably with the Election Integrity Network. They look at things across the state. They look at best practices all across the United States and try to implement those procedures here and legislate them and make it better. They're not trying to prohibit. They're not trying to take away your right to vote. They're just trying to make it fair. And there's two sides. And each side, you can have your fair fight people. Let the Republicans have their EIN people. They're polar opposites. But they all want fair, independent, accountable, transparent elections. So let's try to agree. Let's talk. How can we do that? How can we achieve it so that both sides are happy and both sides are even? And if that will be my main mission, I'm going to continue to try, try to talk across the aisle. How do you disagree with me? What can be better? I'm going to reach out to all these Democrat representatives and try to meet with them individually to see how we can find common ground because division is not good for us. It's not good for the county. So hopefully, we can agree and move forward with better elections than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Arrington?
Just a few brief points, Mr. Chair. Under the current law, even our own nomination for chair is subject to getting four affirmative votes. So ask yourself, would we be in contempt if one of our own nominees didn't get four votes? Would we be fined if this board nominated someone for chair and that person didn't actually get four affirmative votes? See, that's how you know the process is fair, right? Or unfair. Because now someone's trying to hold us in contempt and fine the taxpayers of Fulton County because their nominee failed to get four votes. Let me just talk briefly about this BRE and the votes and the certification. The BRE is not just the BRE. They are also the superintendent of elections, and they also serve as the registrar. And as the superintendent and the registrar, those duties of the BRE are what are called ministerial duties. They are to be performed without discretion. This Board of Commissioners does not have any ministerial duties. Every vote that we take is discretionary. And so that is the difference. You see, what they're trying to do, they're conflating the issues. They're conflating the, oh, well, our board, when she was over here and she voted on this board, she was told she had to certify. Yeah, because the BRE also serves as the superintendent of elections. And the job of the superintendent of elections is a ministerial duty. There's no discretion in that job. They also serve as the registrar. The registrar also has ministerial duties. And so those duties are to be performed without discretion. As commissioners, every vote that we have is discretionary. And perhaps, perhaps, there could be two readings of this statute. But that's why we have 222 years of American jurisprudence to lean on. We have 222 years of case law from the United States Supreme Court to lean on. We have 222 years of practice, policy, and procedure. We were just talking about that earlier on the motion to file. Oh, that's been our practice. Well, guess what else has been our practice? For 222 years, if a nomination fails for any reason, not getting enough votes, someone resigns, if a nomination fails for any reason, the appropriate, normal remedy is making a substitute or alternate nomination. And so I'll leave it there. I don't know if I, I guess I could live with the motion to table, but I really would rather vote on the people. That's what I would rather do. So, but, you know, you know, we could table it. If that's what I want to do, I want to vote on them. And I think my interpretation is that we do need to have a vote. But I guess even a vote to table is still a vote. But all the court can do is make us vote. The court, no party, not, we can't even, we can't even make sure that anyone that we would nominate to be for chair would get four votes. There's no agenda item where we know that there's going to be four votes when we walk in here. Four votes is not promised to anyone. It's not a promise to any agenda item. The only thing where this county can do is put it up for a vote and take action. So I'm ready to take that action. I wish it was not a motion to table, but that's what it is. So I guess I'll support it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Let me make sure everybody understands the motion on the floor, what we mean by a motion to table until the appellate court rules. That's a complete motion. All right, that motion is on the floor to approve. Let's vote.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes. Five yays, two nays.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other matters that come before us today?
No further matters.
Thank you.